Welcome. Town Council Meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, November 21st, 2022. Teresa, roll please.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Monacino.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Present.
Councilmember Roy.
Here.
Councilmember Sova.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Bunch.
Here, all present accounted for in one form or another. An executive session will be held purpose of council discussion consultation direction to and legal advice from the town attorney pursuant to Arizona by statute thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero three, Prince A, Prince three, and Prince four regarding the Desert Hill stamp pipe. And number two is council discussion evaluates the town manager performance pursuant to Arizona by statute thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero three, Prince A, and Prince one. Do we have a motion to move into session?
So move second.
All those in favor?
Right.
All right, we'll be back, folks. All right, everyone, welcome to the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, November 21st, 2022. I see here, I'm gonna pick on one of these fellows to lead us in the pledge, let's see which one.
The elder ones.
Oh, Bob Boris, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? I'm gonna take some stuff out of order here, all right off the bat, because I can, it's my last opportunity to do that. We're gonna go to presentations, town manager, would you like to?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, Mr. Council, and the public, I'd just like to recognize Mike Baxley. Who is leaving the town for a wonderful opportunity after seventeen years. When he got here seventeen years ago, I think I'd already been here. Seven years. But I've seen a lot of changes for the good, and I've seen the department grow and a lot of new things implemented, and I'd just like to take an opportunity publicly to thank Mike for seventeen years serving the community, and he was wonderful to work with, and we'll miss him.
Here, here.
Now who's the next one up to?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Show turns to you.
You turn to me.
I'm turning to you.
And what you would like me to do, there's no script or anything up here, so I just gonna have to wing this.
You are gonna have to wing.
You know, I mean, there's some people up here who are not gonna be here for the next meeting, actually, they could be, but they'd be sitting out there with y'all. Which is a little bit different. They've been serving the community for quite a few years, you know, some, some people have, you know, like taken a, taken a term off and then come back and because of the way, and I, there's some things sitting here, I'm not sure what this is about, but we have a gentleman here. Wow, council member two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, vice mayor from two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-two, can anybody guess who that might be? It says in grateful appreciation for your outstanding leadership and dedication from Cave Creek, Arizona, and Mr. Vice Mayor David Smith. We're gonna do pictures of my. And I wore my best shirt. I got another one sitting here. Interesting. Vice Mayor, two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, he was my wingman on my first term as mayor. And did a pretty darn good job of it, he was even following me down a path that he shouldn't have followed me down sometimes, but it worked out anyway.
You always follow the squadron leader.
Yeah, then he took two years off due to the voters of the town of Cave Creek, and then the voters of the town of Cave Creek blessed him with a, another one. So Vice Mayor from two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen, council member twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, and grateful appreciation for your outstanding leadership and dedication presented to former Vice Mayor Ron.
You ought to come in front of the logo.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Then there's one more guy who's not gonna be here, because he wasn't on the ballot this time around, let's see here. Presented to Reg Monacino, grateful appreciation for your outstanding leadership. Now, in addition to serving on council, Reg has been on the, on the planning commission, he has been a board member at the, at the museum, board member where.
Land Trust.
Land Trust, you know, so he's, he's got his, his fingers in his nose and a bunch of stuff in town, but we'll go ahead and, and give him a plaque anyway.
Step over.
That concludes the presentations for this evening. And now it's back to public announcements. See, these fellows got plaques, well, I've got a couple of plaques too, I got, got one from the League of Cities and Towns for not being real smart and being here a long time. Mike's been here seventeen years, that right, you, you took over after I was, after I was on council. Actually been on council for seventeen and a half years, I've seen awful lot of stuff happen in the community of Cave Creek. This is my last meeting where I'll be sitting in the middle seat. Councilman Morris, Mayor-elect Morris will be sitting in the middle seat, and God only knows where they're gonna put me, but I hope it's somewhere where I still have a voice. And because it's rather liberating, because being, being elected to council and knowing that I'm never gonna run again, because I really have had about all I can stand, and all I can stand has to do with, I'm trying to be delicate and indelicate at the same time here, people who really don't understand what's going on, I've got a T-shirt almost wore tonight, and that T-shirt says Cave Creek, home of the actually challenged and emotionally charged. What we have is a lot of people in this town who don't understand government, the way it works, they have no idea that we're, we are, they think that we're a pure democracy, where four people up here can just decide anything on anybody's property or whatever, that's not the way it works. The way it works is we're constitutional public, we have laws and rules that we have to follow, and if you don't understand those laws and rules, it's really easy to, to convince people that their emotions are the right way to go, and quite frankly, I've, I've had a lot of it, I refuse to be quiet from now on, you're gonna hear a lot more from me. You have people who, who are coming onto council who maybe don't get it, and I'm hoping that we can educate those folks, and they'll understand exactly the way things are supposed to be. Having said that, count town, town manager, it's your turn.
Mayor, members of the council, I just want to remind everyone that Hidden in the Hills is this weekend again, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, ten AM, and I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving holiday and safe holiday. Town Hall will be closed, and we actually close early on Wednesday to allow folks to get to their families to start their celebration, so I think that's all I have for the tonight.
Does that mean you're turning it back over to me? I'm gonna run my last meeting here, well, let's hope I do a good job, what do you think? All right, consent agenda approval, April's twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, special town council budget meeting minutes, approval of September twelfth, twenty twenty-two, special town council session minutes, and number three, cancellation of the January third, twenty twenty-three, regular town council meeting, do we have a motion?
So move.
All those in, wait a second.
Take it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Did I miscall the public, I did, we got any?
Councilmember Monacino had wanted to say a few words.
Pass, thank you.
We have none.
Sorry about that, Reg, I, that was at the top of the thing, and I blamed these progressive lenses many times over things that I don't quite see in there that were supposed to be. General agenda item number one, council discussion approval of resolution R two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three, a resolution, the mayor and county council, town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving the town of Cave Creek Emergency Operations Plan, EOP, Don Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, before I forget, happy Thanksgiving to all of you, whichever, tonight before you is the new updated Emergency Operations Plan. As a, as a result of the dramatic changes that have been made to the town's emergency services, the prior version of the Emergency Operations Plan for the town of Cave Creek, it's been reviewed, revised, and updated. Significant updates include the addition of the National Asset Management Systems Best Practices, the inclusion of the Community Risk Reduction Director, as well as references to the town's inclusion in the Regional Automatic Aid and Emergency Response System, and integration of the Cave Creek Daisy Mountain Emergency Response Services. These actions will meet a previously established goal of the town council, resolution number R two thousand twenty-one dash oh six, that was take steps necessary to officially initiate a process that would allow the town of Cave Creek to become, excuse me, to become participant in the regional automatic aid system. The larger goal is to establish the processes necessary to improve the important town-sponsored emergency services for the town's residents, visitors, and businesses. This document action will help to confirm the commitment that has been made to address the current and future emergency services for the town of Cave Creek.
Question from council?
I had a question on page one eighty-six, section nine, which the marshal has answered, thank you, Marshall.
Oh goodness, all right. Um, let's see. There's public comment on that one.
No, no public comments.
Okay, we're gonna come back to council, and if it's okay, I'd like to make the motion on this one, there's a particular reason. Motion to approve resolution R two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three, a resolution, the mayor and town council, the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving the town of Cave Creek Emergency Operations Plan, Prince, EOP.
Second.
Second, and, and what I want to, what I want, reason I'm, I'm really interested in doing this is because when we had the East Desert and Yocatillo fires, in the aftermath of that, there were people running around town screaming that we had no plan, we had a plan. The plan had been voted on, had been approved, but it's like anything in a battle, when the first cannon shots fired, the plan goes down the tubes, well, the only problem we had was, was communication and any, in future emergencies, heaven forbid that we have any, I'm sure that we'll do a much better job of that, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes clearly have it, motion carries seven zero, thank you, Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor.
Number two, council discussion approval of first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero eight, in order to the mayor and council, council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the official town of Cave Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zone of two parcels, totaling approximately three point six acres, parcels two eleven dash zero forty-seven dash zero eight seven A and two eleven dash forty-seven dash zero eight eight A, describing exhibit one and depicting exhibit two from the desert rural residential DR eighty-nine zone to commercial buffer zone CB zone, placed on the, oh my goodness, they're both there, who's gonna talk to us?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be the one speaking this evening, I'll try my best to beat your presentation right there, I don't know if I can speak as fast, but I'll do my best. But also happy Thanksgiving to you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and members of the, of the council, so. Staff is here this evening to bring forward to council consideration of case number Z dash twenty-two dash oh four, Kim Lee Horn's zone change request, first reading of ordinance oh two, twenty twenty-two dash oh eight. The zone change request is to change the underlying zoning and amend the town of Cave Creek zoning map for parcels two one one dash four seven dash zero eight eight A and two eleven dash four seven dash zero eight seven A from DR eighty-nine to commercial buffer. The parcels within the specific area plan, it consists of a commercial land use designation per the twenty twenty-one general plan. The properties are located one parcel deep north of Carefree Highway from fifty-first street to fifty-second, from fifty-first street, apologize, to fifty-third street. I apologize, fifty-second street. The applicant has not submitted a site plan review application, as they intend to ask for consideration to amend the zoning map in advance of finalizing the site design, including preparation of grading and drainage plans. The property would still require pre-application conference for all departments prior to the submission of a site plan review application, where additional scrutiny is given to the project and development criteria are reviewed for compliance with town codes, ordinances, and guidelines. At the planning commission meeting held on October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, the town of Cave Creek Planning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of zone change application case Z dash twenty-two dash oh four. Case number Z dash twenty-two dash oh four conforms with the requirements outlined in the zone change application and is consistent with the general plan and Carefree Highway Specific Area Plan. This case is solely for a zone change request, and whether the proposed commercial buffer zone is appropriate for this location. Mr. Mayor, at this moment, are there any questions for staff? If not, the applicant is here to answer any questions.
Mayor.
Former Vice Mayor Sova.
I wonder if you could clarify just one point for me, I think in the verbiage part of our package, it said there would be one ingress and ingress, one on fifty-first street, one on fifty-second. In the conceptual site plan we have in our package, I believe it shows what appears to be, where I can see two on fifty-second and one on fifty-first, plus the major one on Carefree Highway. Would you comment on that, please?
Mayor Bunch, former Vice Mayor Sova. The, as, as you're aware, as council's aware, the specific area plan was amended to allow more than one point of ingress and egress off of a north-south street.
Right.
Provided they meet a certain distance from center line of a hundred and twenty-five feet, which they show. If, if that was in the narrative that staff presented, that's, that's a typo on our part, but it's, they showed two points of ingress, and they, they could only have one, or they could show two.
Which I realize it's a conceptual plan, which is subject to change.
Right, okay, we, we look at the conceptual plan for compliance with the regulations contained within the SAP, just to make sure.
Good, thank you, that clears it up.
Councilman Monacino?
Thank you, Mayor, question for council, in the action item request, the it is suggested, and I'll quote, if it is determined that this property is not appropriate for a commercial buffer zoning designation, council may deny the case. The word appropriate. That's, I don't know, I think you can drive a truck through that one.
Well, that's because you're acting legislatively, and you're allowed to drive a truck through it. So, so the question is, do you wish to turn it down, that gives you, right now, when you're acting legislatively, this is when you have the most discretion, you can decide what's appropriate, as long as you don't quote, shock the conscience, that's, that's a case law, that's not the case, so. My point is, if you can make a decision that you can explain and justify, that's all a court will ask, assuming the decision is not based on self-interest, conflict of interest, or, or some sort of protected civil right. But as appropriate, that, that's legislative, you get to decide as council if you wish to approve the zoning, now, once you go beyond that to site plan, it's no longer legislative, and appropriate is driven by the criteria set forth in your code, and we're gonna talk about that later concerning whether the commission should be involved. But you have every right as an elected official sitting right there acting legislatively to decide what's appropriate.
Thank you. Mayor-elect Morris?
So this is, are we getting unrestricted commercial buffer right after, as a result of this, or is this restricted to, in what way is this restricted to what we see in this preliminary site plan?
So the commercial buffer zone in this specific plan area, the Carefree Highway Plan, has several restrictions that are more restrictive than the overall bulk regulations for commercial buffer. They have a reduced height, they have reduced lot coverage, there are several factors that limit development in this particular area of town per the specific area plan. Even uses are restricted.
Okay, thanks.
Recall us repairing that after a slight failure in the history of the SAP. Any else from council? There is public comment on this one.
No comments.
We have, and we're back to council for motion, please, anybody can do that, I'm not gonna jump all over this.
I'll do that, if I may.
Please.
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance zero two oh, two two dash zero eight, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zone of two parcels totaling approximately three point six acres, parcels two one one hyphen forty-seven hyphen zero eight seven A and two one one hyphen forty-seven hyphen zero eight eight A, described in exhibit one and depicted in exhibit two from a desert rural residential in Peren DR dash eighty-nine, on Peren Zone to a commercial buffer, Peren CB, on Peren Zone.
We have a motion, former Vice Mayor Sova, you had the motion, comments?
I believe it's appropriate, it falls in line with what is on the north side of Carefree Highway, and I believe it'll be a good revenue-producing entity, or entities, I should say, contribute the, to our coffer that three percent sales tax, so I'm very much supportive of it.
Councilman McGuire, you had the second.
Yes, this goes back to important work done by Luke's predecessor, Ian Cordwell, who negotiated this with the citizens, it was work well done.
Any else from council? Council, Councilman Monacino?
Do we know what use will be made there, property?
We.
At this moment, no, councilmember Monacino, at this moment, no.
We do not, however, if you read the ordinance and the rules for, for the, for the specific area plan now, as opposed to what they were, it'll be beneficial in some form or another. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eyes clearly have it, motion carries seven zero, agenda item number.
Rolling down.
Three, council discussion approval of first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero five, in order to the mayor and council, the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance, chapter twelve entitled Site Plan, section twelve dot two entitled Procedures, subsection A, number seven and eight, and section twelve point seven entitled Amendments and Inspiration, subsections D and E, establishing an effective date and providing for repeal and severability. Planning Director, Mr. Kausman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council, I'm gonna invite the chairman, Bob Boris, and vice chairman Steve Brechner, to sit at the staff table, because really, this, this came about from several months ago, reviewing a site plan case, and essentially being asked, why are we, why are we looking at these, if, if there's really no discretion beyond what the criteria list, and it's an allowed use within a given zone? So what these cases are, there's three cases total, as advertised and noticed, represent text amendments to three different chapters of the zoning ordinance. As stated several months ago, the chairman of the planning commission asked staff to research how site plan applications for commercial projects are administered in other jurisdictions within Arizona. Staff prepared and presented information related to the site plan review process in September. At that meeting in September, the planning commission directed staff to prepare draft text amendments for the planning commission to consider at their meeting in October. Staff and legal counsel have vetted, have vetted the proposed amendments and brought those to the planning commission in October. It was at that meeting that the planning commission recommended approval of the text amendments, which if adopted by the town council, would remove the planning commission from the review of the site plan cases. In addition to the text amendments brought forward this evening for consideration of a first reading, the planning commission also recommended changing the name of the commercial buffer zoning district to intermediate commercial, that's, that's part of the third ordinance that you'll see, I'm kind of presenting these all together as one case. Two of the text amendments are presented with options, those are found in exhibit C one and C three, which are pages ninety-six and one thirteen of your packets. What those options mean is that the town council can choose to remove the planning commission from its review of site plans only, thereby keeping town council review or choose to allow site per compliance with the town code, building code, zoning ordinance, and technical design guidelines, and subsequently approved solely by staff or in administrative manner. So in addition to the meeting minutes from the planning commission meetings held September fifteenth and October twentieth included in the packet, as stated, I, I also asked that the chairman and vice chairman be here in attendance to present the rationale for the proposed text amendments as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn it directly over to the gentleman sitting to my right.
Before we get too far, let me tell you, I think you've recovered quite well from the Saturday evening debacle at Sun Devil Stadium.
It's nothing compared to last Thursday.
I just, one point for planning director, you'd mentioned pages one oh two and.
Ninety-six and one thirteen.
Yeah, what, you didn't mention one oh two. Where there's, is that not to be considered, that's where you had option one, option two?
It might, it might be just a restatement, so there's several, you've got, so exhibit C one, which is page ninety-six, is chapter twelve, showing all of the, all of the text, whereas one oh two is the ordinance itself.
Okay, so it's, it's a repeat then.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Vice Mayor. Can you tell us why we were given two options? It's either a yes or a no that's been presented to us, didn't the planning commission have a recommendation versus one or two? I kind of think it's, it's, it's along the lines of do away with site plans, but why did you give us two options?
So, this is a very good question, I'm glad you asked, so the, the reason that council has presented two options is effectively one option would remove planning commission and town council from the site plan review process. The second option would only review the planning commission from site plan review process and still require town council to give a decision on a site plan, so the, the planning commission was expressly in their motion, read the motion and said to remove the requirement for site plan review by the planning commission. They didn't want the plan, and they can speak for themselves, but the planning commission didn't want to say, not only do we not want to do it, but we think the council shouldn't do it either, it's, it's your choice ultimately.
Very, very wise on their part.
And you actually have more than two options, you've got a third option, you can keep it the way it is, or a fourth option, you can rewrite it to however you'd like to see it. It's not.
Tell me just one thing, and this is just for my purposes, it has nothing to do with how I vote on this or anything. The meeting that took place on the seventh, or not the seventeenth, last Thursday, that was not a site plan review, right?
No, no, it was not.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, because I have a, a strong desire that the community get to have plenty of opportunity to have their input, and since they had plenty of opportunity at that time, and it's gonna continue in that direction, I think that's, that's a great idea, thank you.
Councilmember Roy. Thank you, Luke, as a good segue to that question, how would you respond to a comment by a member of the community who thinks that this does limit their ability to provide input or opinions on a zoning application, and also the fact that this may burden you in some way as the administrator now responsible for doing all the side plan work and oversight?
Councilmember Roy, actually, we, we already incur the burden, the staff memo that I put together for these cases outlines everything that staff does, and it's actually more work to take it to the planning commission than take it to the town council, it's, it's more agendas, it's more preparation, it's more staff time to do that. As far as limiting public comment, I, and I, I don't want to steal really what, what the members of commission that are here this evening to present. But with site plans, we're talking about uses that are allowed in a zone, and then the criteria set forth in the council, those can't be, those can't be stepped back, you can't give, the council can't give administrative relief on a height limitation or, or something else, our ordinances are the ordinances, they're the requirements, so sometimes. So sometimes having stat or having the public be able to comment on site plans when there really isn't. Any variation that can be done or sought is um. I I don't think is necessarily a a true statement.
So you don't think that the perception of you as the planning director working in isolation. On the site plans is credible?
No, no, it's a site plan isn't just touched by the planning department or its staff. It. It really is reviewed by the town engineer, uh the utilities director, the billing official. Everybody is involved in the review of those to make sure compliance, like I stated with the town codes. The utility requirements, uh building codes, so.
And that answers one of my concerns because I was, I'm a little concerned that if it is all up to you, what happens when you're not here? Um do you have backup who would be able to effectuate side plan reviews?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I guess we're ready to move on. You go sit down, Mr. Kousman. Oh, wait, 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 wait.
I just have one last.
Maybe you're not ready to move on.
I I think and you probably have some things to say, but at some point, I guess now is as good as any. We need to recognize Mr. Boris because he's also retiring from the plan commission and he.
No, we're not gonna let him.
He has been the chairman for multiple years. I'm not sure exactly how many, five, and that deserves a round of applause as well.
Not only that, it requires mental health.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mayor, vice mayor, member of councils. Uh the reason that we're here tonight is to request remove uh to remove the site plan review from the planning commission responsibilities. For the record, my name is Bob Boris. I'm chairman of the planning commission. My right is vice chairman Steve Brechner. The impetus for this request is based on in the acknowledgement that site plan reviews in Cave Creek are administrative. Offering no possibility for exercising discretion on the part of the planning commission with respect to site plan requirements. The planning commission cannot increase, decrease, or set aside. What is required for compliance with various codes, ordinances, and technical guidelines governing this phase of the entitlement process for a piece of property. Site plan reviews by the planning commission are superfluous exercise offering nothing of value to the property entitlement process because the planning commission is precluded from any manner of discretion in the matter. Is therefore a waste of town resources, including volunteer planning commissioners' time. Fiscal costs for staff time and effort in staffing, public hearings, and producing documents. For each planning commissioner's use in reviewing each site plan and producing the verba- verbatim. Planning commission public hearing minutes and keeping the lights on and maintaining the meeting facility. Since further since there is no discretion allowed by the planning commission or individual commissioners in the site plan review. The process presents an unnecessary opportunity. For individual commissioners, however well or ill intentioned, to inject personal preference, which is a discretionary act. Into process thereby creating a potential for legal and fight financial jeopardy for themselves by acting outside the scope of their authority. And the town, if the town council accepts the inappropriate personal preference as a condition of approval for the site plan. It should be noted that the town council is subject to the same discretionary uh constraints as the planning commission. Director Kousman cited past examples and materials he was asked to provide by the chairman of discretionary acts. On the part of town council members during site plan review that resulted in negative legal and fiscal consequences to the town. To prepare for this request, Director Kousman was requested by the planning commission to prepare three things for the planning department, uh planning commission's consideration. One, research cave creek codes, ordinances, guidelines, et cetera, to determine what would have to be amended if we were to pursue this action. And provide code amendments to achieve removing site plan review from planning commission responsibilities. The amendments were agendized for planning commission meeting October twentieth, twenty twenty two. The amendments were discussed and voted upon. Case number A dash twenty two dash zero one was passed. Vice chairman Brechner, commissioners Miller and Dreskal and chairman Boris voted yes. Commissioner Anderson stated, I'm not prepared and voted no. Commissioner Elkma was absent. Case number eight twenty two dash zero two was passed with the same result as the previous case for yes, one, no. Item two or the next item. Requested of Luke, research Arizona revised statutes or A R Ss to identify. Any that would have an impact on a decision to remove the site plan review from planning commission responsibilities. A R S does not preclude the requested action. Item number three asked of Luke, research how similarly situated Arizona municipalities manage site plan reviews. Additionally, a legal analysis was requested from the town attorney, Mr. Sims, for the course of action contemplated. And one of the questions to Mr. Sims relative to question number three above. Our other municipalities handling site plan reviews. The question was. Do municipal, do municipal jurisdictions vary in the requirements for site plan reviews, parenthetically, also referred to as development review? Usually due to discretionary components such as architecture, form-based zoning codes. Or other aesthetics while the cave creek zoning ordinance does not allow for discretion or variation. Rather, the ordinance employs maximum and or minimum bulk regulations to obtain desired uh development. Mr. Sims' response, quote, yes, correct. Municipalities vary in their development review and site plan review process. For example. Some establish general criteria to consider as you suggest, such as architecture, form-based zoning codes. Or other aesthetics. Chapter twelve, section twelve point five, the town zoning ordinance, however, establishes explicit objective criteria for site plan approvals, close quote. Under section twelve point five, the language is clear. This is again a quote. If the criteria are met, the commission must recommend approval. There are eleven criteria listed in the zoning ordinance associated with site plan review. The criteria for site plan review are all required to be met. Through the application of the development standards found in various chapters of zoning ordinance and technical design guidelines, specifically chapter three, commercial zones, chapter eight, landscaping, chapter, chapter nine, signage. Technical design guideline number one, grading and drainage, technical design guidelines, number two, transportation. Or technical design guidelines, number five, trails. For site plan review, the commission's discretion is limited to specific objective criteria. Additional criteria and obligations cannot be imposed, close quote. The last statement by Mr. Sims is the key to granting the planning commission's recommendation to remove site plan review from planning commission responsibility. The way site plans are presented to the planning commission for review, a staff report follows introduction by the chairman of the agendized site plan review case. In the staff report, the staff warrants that the submitted site plan complies with all applicable requirements. As a practical matter, if the site plan did not comply, the site plan would not have been submitted to the planning commission for review. Further, Mr. Sims' analysis in response to three other questions found no reason that would preclude the planning commission to take this request and representation to the town council. Summarize the three other questions are number one, does the site plan review require a public hearing per Arizona revised statutes? Mr. Sims' response, no. Then number two, does the planning commission have the authority to initiate recommendations to revise and amend the zoning ordinance? Mr. Sims' response, yes. Number three, does the town code specifically list site plan as a formal duty or responsibility of the planning commission? Mr. Sims' response, no. Mr. Sims' complete responses are found in the commission's, excuse me, the council's packet. If the request is rejected by the town council. We have a commissioner, Commissioner Anderson, who had several points that he brought forth during our discussions and prior to our vote on the two items. Commissioner Anderson's was the lone dissenter in both cases and. One of his concerns centered on, quote, elimination of site plan reviews by the planning commission denies the town of a significant forum for public discussion. And communication kind of goes to what you were talking about. And the response to that is, as the planning commission has no discretion to consider any change in the requirements. Any public input we receive that would suggest changes cannot be acted upon and therefore would not change anything. The property at the point of site plan review has already passed. Things that the planning commission has uh discretion on. And that would be general plan last land use criteria and the correct zoning category. Um and with this, it was mentioned earlier that uh the. One of the cases that we looked at in our last meeting on the seventeenth dealt with a uh zone change. And we transitioned that zone change to create a more harmonious transition from the general commercial on the uh principal arterials. Back toward the established residential uh uh locations. Mr. Anderson also asserts that the site plan review would serve the purpose of providing the council with important information to prepare the council members to make an informed vote on the matter. Again, our response, again, the council is subject to the same discretionary constraints, planning commission. If the site plan complies as warranted by staff, the council is obliged to accept the uh the application. Uh with that, I'll uh answer any questions you might have.
Counsel. Councilmember Roy.
Um, Mr. Boris, has there ever been a time when the planning or Steve? Uh when the planning commission has had an objection to the site plan for um various reasons uh that could be held up?
Well, that's part of the reason I that I mentioned that when this occurs, it's inappropriate. Because the planning commission has no discretion to set aside any of the requirements that uh are in in our governing documents. So when that happens, and it has happened, it's happened recently. If that uh personal preference had been. Um included as a condition of approval, as a recommendation to the town council, and the town council had acted on that. I don't believe there would have been any jeopardy for the planning commission because we're a recommending body, but certainly there would be legal consequences. For the council and for the town should the town attempt to impose requirements to go beyond what is required in the code.
Mr. Brechner had a comment.
You know, I I think a simple. The the simple answer here is we're not dealing with rezoning a property or anything discretionary. The properties that come to us are already zoned in a particular manner. Or in particular zone and they're entitled to certain uses. If that owner selects one of those uses and complies with all of our bulk regulations. We are in no position to deny that. If we were to, we would then subject ourselves to a legal claim by that property owner for denying them their property rights. So this is a a limited situation where all the rights are already set in place. They're complying with all of our codes. Once they do that, we have zero discretion. If we try to impose some discretion and create additional requirements, we now subject ourselves to a claim. If we turn it down, we subject ourselves to a claim. So because of this and because in in the the, one of the issues that I confronted is when we have these in a public forum. It it almost um lends itself to the public thinking that they have some discretion to decide what a property owner chooses to do with their property, what type of business that they're going to put on when we have no discretion. And that only causes more angst and strife within the community when we have zero discretion. And if we try to assert discretion, we now subject ourselves to a claim. So not only is this a waste of your time because you're under the same limitations that we are as a planning commission. You can't turn it down. If they're in compliance, they're in compliance. You you do so, we do, we turn it down on our own peril. So it's a waste of your time, our time, staff time, cost for the town. Um I don't want to spend my time as a commissioner on something like that. I'd rather spend it on something productive. Uh so because of all the and beyond that, it's delaying everything for the applicant, for the property. Um doesn't put anything necessarily more on the staff that reviews the site plan because they're doing all that before it comes to us. And warranting as as chairman Boris indicated that it's in compliance. Since it's there. It's essentially a reverse.
So in five years that you've been on the plan commission. As the chairman and for five years or just as a member and chairman for five years, just to clarify.
Nine years on the plan.
Oh, nine years.
Yeah.
Have you ever come across an oversight or an error or um any reason that the staff needs to go back and review the site plan again? So has the staff ever had an error that needed to be corrected?
Um not of any substance that I can recall. You know, they're human and so they would certainly uh the the possibility certainly exists for that to happen. I don't know if they have an omission and errors clause or not, but certainly one that they probably should have in case they do make an error. But uh there's no guarantee that that we would catch it either.
And I guess my point is. Is this last step that the plan commission takes a look at the site review or the council is, are we going to eliminate a checks and balance?
No, the reason why is we're not going to catch it. We're relying on staff. They're the trained experts that are looking at those plans and confirming that. The site plan meets all of our codes and ordinances. I'm not the town engineer. I'm not an architect. We are not doing that. You're not doing that as a council. You're not going to catch something. And say, wait, you know, this, uh, don't we require one more treaty? This that this is not going to happen. We we rely on our experts at the town, building partners, staff to to do all these checks and balances to ensure that our codes and ordinances are compliant. It's not going to happen. We we accept that warrant and we move forward. We have to.
Okay.
And and as vice chairman mentioned, the the planning commission or the uh planning staff, not the only people that see this.
Yes.
The town engineer goes through the building uh official, fire official.
Except that the that the planning director now is also going to be the building professional as well. So that's one last step that that will go through.
And each of each.
No. Am I wrong on that? Somebody could correct me. There will be a building official. The building official will not be the director. There will be a building official. All right, very good. I'm sorry if I interrupted you.
Well, that's all right. Uh so there are a number of departments in the town that that are that have responsibility. They are paid. A professional certified, degree experienced, uh and there's no reason to expect that uh they wouldn't produce a a product that uh. Is that meets their requirements. And uh I would imagine that if that if it did happen and it happened on a routine basis, that there probably would be a change. But that, to my knowledge, to answer your question, I don't recall that ever happened before. You might miss, you know, there's a certain percentage that has to be landscape. They might miss something like that, but that's not substantive. I mean, it's not going to kill the project and it might be caught later. So I get.
That does, that answers my question. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll I'll come clean. Um chairman Boris did catch uh the numbers for the McDonald's lot coverage on one sheet. Were not the same as they were on another sheet. And I didn't catch that there was an error between the two and uh he did and called me like two weeks before the meeting and said, you need to get them in check. So I did miss that one. Just to clear your conscience.
I'm done. Thank you.
But I I would say that anything involving discretion would remain with the planning commission. We were only seeking. To remove something in which we have zero discretion.
And those are the major things. General plan amendments, zoning amendments, special use permits. Those are the, those are the things that we should have commit uh discretion on. And as we demonstrated the on the seventeenth, we do use that discretion if we've can tie it to some improvement to the project, to the benefit to the town. Uh benefit to the neighborhood. And as I say, that's what we did.
Okay.
Former vice mayor Silva.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that during my four years on the council and two years on the plan commission. Having had a background in plats and plans and engineering, construction. I think you all will agree, I have asked, have asked a numerous amount of questions, almost. Too many sometimes. I've peeled the onion quite, well, you don't all have to agree. And in those six years, I be at the building official or the planning official or. Any other director, official in the town has been right on top. any other director, official in the town, has been right on top of it and had an answer and satisfied everything 100%. There's not been one instance, not one question that I've asked in those six years that they didn't already have it well put to bed, understood, completed. So my compliments to the town staff, Mr. Kausman and others because job well done, and I'm sure they'll keep that up.
Think the exposure, as I mentioned, and as I asked Luke to provide examples of where personal preferences had been used to approve a site plan. And in virtually every case, and Luke, you can respond to this, in virtually every case came back to haunt the town or to to, you know, haunt the town. It costs money. It costs legal fees. And that, to me, that's where the exposure is. And this is what, this is one thing that we are Steve and I are very acutely aware of is to not allow this to happen at the planning commission level. So when we do hear personal preferences trying to be interject, interjected on site plans, try to cut it off. Cut it off the path so it doesn't proceed any further.
Yeah, page, page ninety eight of your packet, Mayor, has examples of of site plan review gone awry. In my estimation, with the case numbers and what the circumstances were and and what transpired as a result of processing those cases. So I I I chose four cases. There, having administered three of them and just hearing the lore from one from nineteen ninety seven, I was still in high school, unfortunately. So can't pin that one on me.
He was still in high school.
So that just a, just an example of what the limitations are.
Mayor elect Morris.
I guess there's just absolutely no question that's more efficient. I mean, the efficiency is just overwhelming. Why, why do you something when you? It's not. But there is one thing that it has done, and it does, especially commercial buffer. Every time I see a commercial buffer and if it's renamed to intermediate buffer, I'm sure it will continue is they're very controversial. One thing it does signal is if there are problems with the underlying code, those uses, the other things that are in the code, there is a signaling aspect. So if this were approved and we took out both the Planning Commission and the council, how would the public identify and communicate issues that there's, they communicate issues that aren't a problem? In everybody else's mind, maybe in theirs, but there have been some things that have come up that are worthwhile. How would those be identified, communicated, and brought to the forefront for for change?
Sure. Mayor elect Morris. The, that was actually a point of discussion by Commissioner Driscoll. When we had this in September, it was a discussion item when when Commission was directing me to prepare these amendments. She referenced pet suites, and that's a great example. Pet suites we were processing as a site plan. We knew right away that it's probably not appropriate as a site plan. And we brought forward an amendment to change it to a special use for for any future application, pet resorts, anything of that nature. So it allows council or commission and council both the discretion to limit or deny that similar use should it ever come up again. The the other thing that's that's basically a fail safe in the ordinance itself is the zoning administrator has the authority to bring any, any case before the commission or council. Should they, should they deem necessary that public input is is necessary? So there are probably obviously, our chapter, section three point five of our zoning ordinance isn't really an exhaustive clearinghouse of every anticipated use that could ever go in. But it's a good start and it's a good baseline for what things are appropriate and what zones like storage and warehousing not being appropriate and commercial buffer or town core commercial. So our ordinance is already structured kind of with the guardrails. And then we as staff have have the ultimate discretion to bring it forward if it's something that is allowed by site plan, but we think it's a good, a good case to maybe create change. That's, that's when you would see those types of cases come forward.
So how would the public know, learn about, know about and express their opinions on something that that came up? Right now, we have advertised meetings with planning commission and with council that are watched closely. How would the public find out about these and know when something was going to happen? Not necessarily in their neighborhood because I presume that the notification, I I presume, is is the current notification in public meetings still going to continue?
No, we would not send out notice necessarily, or I mean, obviously, if these were approved, we wouldn't have public meetings on site plans.
No mailers going out to the neighbors.
No, no, not necessarily. The trying to give, give an example of you know, for example, if if something in the town core and existing building that had an existing use, you know, Montessori is is a perfect example, the Montessori School at Spurcross, that was office retail. First, then they came in and did a tenant improvement and switched occupants. There, there was no public notice. There are no meetings. It was allowed by, it was an allowed use, allowed by site plan. It was just able to occupy that building. And then just looking at our inventory left of of vacant commercial properties, I mean, yeah, it'd probably be the neighborhood of well, I mean, we still have several parcels. I mean, a lot of parcels that are yet to be zoned, and those would require public hearings, obviously.
Yeah, zoning would probably hearing, but are are site plans advertised? And oh, they are. You're correcting my.
Well, they are because it's going to.
As they are now, yes.
They are now.
Oh, they are now. Yeah.
There's no required notices to be sent out like a rezoning.
Yeah.
Okay, these are just parcels where they're already entitled to that use. They're zoned for retail or whatever use is allowed under our code. And they're seeking to utilize their property as prescribed by our codes and ordinances. That's it. So my experience is that most of the public input has nothing to do with how many trees or the driveway surface or or stuff like that. It's really, we don't need another compromise. Or they disagree with potential use that that owner has elected to implement on its property.
Mr. Sims, following up with Councilman Morris's stuff there. At the moment that an applicant applies brings in a site plan, at that point, if we find it something we don't particularly want, this body has no opportunity at that point to 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 repair that because it's an ex post facto issue where it's where we would be denying someone their right to utilize the property under the current rules and regulations. Is that, is that accurate?
So are you saying, Luke, I've been looking at this. Yeah, here, let me, let me see if I can be a little clearer. So currently now, there's, there's a case that comes and and they really have no discretion. We have no discretion when they get to us. And and obviously, the danger is if if they, if they try and get discretionary with and change something, then that's, that's where the, where we have exposure. At the time that they, that they bring a site plan to staff, staff begins to look at that and go, oh gee, we don't really want this here, but it fits our criteria. We can't do anything about it at that point either. No, but if they meet the criteria, they have a a right to to, in effect, develop it in accordance with the criteria. The problem is, the issue is, is that it's not completely, totally objective. I mean, when you landscaping, I mean, I think, and what, what, Luke, correctly, Luke, where was the page? Yeah, page, page ninety nine. I work with seventy seven cities and towns on land. Generally, the larger, as you can see here, they, they allow staff to make the decisions. Why? Because they're the right persons to sit down with the applicant to see, to take a look at the technical guidelines that I'm not certain they're a hundred percent objective. I mean, maybe you want trees in this area or maybe. And so what staff does is because the applicant wants to make sure they have a development that fits the town. And so and the ZA, the zoning administrator is the right person. And so most jurisdictions would handle it administratively. You're not necessarily like most jurisdictions. And so, I mean, and and you're, you're, I I work with primarily smaller jurisdictions where they really try to reserve most of it to the electeds, not necessarily to the appointments. And so what, what, what present, what, what, what the, what the commission is saying, when the Vice Chairman said it quite well, they seldom do they have much discretion. They have absolute discretion, but they can't make a final decision on legislation. You get to make that decision, much like when I answered Councilman Monacheo. So but the, the, the reason is property rights, you have, they and you have the right to harm people's property. You have the right to make decisions that can benefit the value of property or cause a detriment in the value of property. That's why we have a very rigorous system, public hearings before them. And if if there's a protest, there's a public hearing before you because our constitution protects their property rights. That does not apply to site plans. And so now what I'm hearing, but I don't see the third alternative here. I I see you have three options. They are saying it's not their highest and best use to make these decisions. They're not elected. These are fairly objective. We should let staff make the final decision. What I'm hearing from you is you're worried that that will rule, keep, keep the public out. But what I'll tell you is the public doesn't have much rights, assuming the property owner has met the conditions. But if there's any ambiguity, it'll be handled at the ZA level. Where do we put that tree? How, you know, how, how, and so there, there is some discretion on the technical guide. Wouldn't you agree with me on there? Yes. And so what they're saying is let's let the pros make that decision, get them out, but then you have to decide. Are you willing to follow Paradise Valley, Prescott Valley, all of which they they all say administrative review only? And some of my smaller jurisdictions give, give the, the, the property owner that this, the one, an appeal to you, but the appeal is short, the appeal is very narrow.
Yeah, wait, basically, you're open, open yourself up for action, any, 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 any action you take above and beyond the, the established criteria on the site plan.
Exactly, but 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 let's assume Luke made a decision, I want three trees versus four. I can't believe, but it might here. I can't believe that could get to you. But that might be something they were, they're, they're, they would like.
They could appeal.
They could, but I think it's.
Would have to go through them.
No, they do now, they do now. But I can tell you of the seventy seven cities and towns I worked with, the, the utility of their group and you is unbelievably, unbelievably successful. And let's use the example of sober living. They are not elected. They had to listen to me tell them about the Fair Housing Act. And they made a decision to allow sober living in a residential district. That's a tough call. But they were, they were limited by the law. And so then they recommended to you, and I think it was almost unanimous, wasn't it? Yeah, it was unanimous. So then you, we had some e-sessions talking about the Fair Housing Act, and you made the decision to allow. That's how the system should work. We're going to let the non-electeds take the appointments, look at some tough issues. All of it can be aired out publicly in hearings, then it comes to you for a final decision. So the, the decision you have to make is, do you want to go straight administrative, taking them and you out? Or is there something where we could have some sort of appeal lines?
Or I mean, even just listen to you would be another option would be consent agenda to council where we send out notice. People are actually notified within a radius of the, the property. And if people show up and want to pull it off the agenda and and discuss it with you guys, that could be done as well.
But if they did that, what would the, there'd be no, it couldn't affect it still. It'd just be a venting mechanism.
Unless, unless there was an error like Bob caught, unless there was an error.
Error or opportunity to complain about some, or it may, maybe they found something that we ought to change in in code.
There are, there are, they're gray, grayer, correct? When you sit down with an applicant in terms of landscaping. I can't believe your code is rigid.
Well, yeah, it's not how many trees of this kind and how many trees of this. Yes, okay, there is some discretion though.
But in, in the planning process, Luke, there is a management meeting, which is kind of like the first step even before a site plan. You would have some discretion there, meeting with the applicant. This is a good idea. That's not, have you thought about this?
That, so you're referring to the pre-application conference?
Okay.
Yeah, so and that, that gets routed to all the different departments. They're able to, you know, Sean says this is what we need for utilities. Hal says this is what you're going to need for drainage report and traffic study, and the list goes on. Yeah, we, we look and what they're proposing, is that allowed? Is it not? What are the processes that they would have to follow in order to obtain that? So yeah. My, usually not as, as filtered with, with applicants. Sure.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Questions? Nope. All right, there is public comment on this one.
David Phelps.
Careful, Dave. I know the history.
So, top of the list will be page ninety eight. We'll talk about the lower case as it's been renamed. It was actually a case in which the town staff having a standard for twenty five percent undisturbed area for a commercial parcel that came to the town council. And I could see that we were not going to get four votes after going to planning commission and having the staff recommend approval. We were not going to get four votes to approve that site plan when it got to our council because we were in the midst of working with friends of Spurcross. We were in the midst of annexation with Spurcross. We had a town ethic here that believed in the natural living desert as a primary, the driver that you protected the Saguaro. You didn't just move them all around to death row. And so what happened was, after really many attempts to try to get staff and the applicant to follow our ordinances regarding the undisturbed requirement of twenty five percent, they were submitting us a site plan that had less than eighteen percent. And staff said it meets our requirements. It clearly did not. We should have had the discretion to say it does not meet our requirements. Come on back when you're ready with twenty five percent of undisturbed. Staff was at a point during that time where they were willing to allow the applicant to have the streetscape along the front of the Cave Creek Road landscaped and allow that to be a value added to the undisturbed equation. They were going to give them undisturbed credit for their street scape improvements. It's clearly not the intent of the undisturbed portion of our zoning code. It's a different thing. I was sued personally. I've told Ernie about this before. And that was, I considered it a slap suit from people that were frustrated, and they were. I brought the infamous hanging Chad of the town of Cave Creek. I brought the cocktail napkin. That Vincent Francia for, I don't know why he decided to call this the cocktail napkin, but this is what I was drawn on in this. This plan has everything this plan has, except this meets the requirements for our zoning ordinance. This has the undisturbed portion that's required by our ordinance. This did not, it never did. And because staff and the Planning Commission brought it forward, saying it met the requirements, look what a position we were put in. So I'm here to actually agree with these guys. And I'm telling you why. This was thirty years ago, and we probably had different things like we had in the town's zoning code. Article sixteen dash eight, section three requires a site plan applicant to consider, analyze, and protect special features such as topography, vegetation, wildlife habitat, archaeological sites, and historic sites, and provides for approval only if certain criteria are met, including a requirement that the design and operating characteristics of the proposed development are reasonably compatible with surrounding development and land uses. And negative impacts have been sufficiently minimized. There's a lot to that. Can you see how one or two guys working here at Town Hall with paper? Can you see how one or two guys working here at Town Hall with paper up to here could miss something? We needed extra sets of eyes thirty years ago to look at everything. Everything that came through, and especially when you get interpretation like the standard is twenty five percent undisturbed. The applicant is submitting to you less than eighteen percent. How can that not be a failure somewhere? In the standards implementation, and I'll tell you what it is. It's how we interpret. Yeah, it's how we interpret what we want to do. So I'm here tonight to support the changes, but I want something else. I really want to see our town develop wisely and with more oversight. Then, then maybe these guys want, or maybe you want. I would like to see a design review board. Somebody that can work with architectural standards, they can work with the land landscape. And what we can do is we can implement our existing bulk standards and put some teeth into it. Because we'll have a board that works with an applicant with, with Luke to get us to where we want to be. We've been pretty lucky, if you consider our failures and our fights and our successes. Because people still come to Cave Creek and it's a one of a kind. Now, they don't say that down on the Carefree Highway looking thing because that's all boilerplate stuff. That's what happens if you want to just use bulk regulations and make it easy. And have no design standard criteria. That's what you get. It's what we got on Carefree Highway. It's, it's the sprouts you can get anywhere. It doesn't look specially Cave Creek, does it? You can't tell me that the uh, tractor supply looks especially upstanding.
Have you not seen the big round law peel logs that are on the entrance? Come on now.
You can't see the inside from the outside, Ernie. I'm talking about the outside, the design.
About the outside.
The peeled logs on the inside.
On the outside.
On the outside. No, I haven't. What do they, do they make a corral on the front? You're just trying to eat up my time. I know what you're.
No, your time's already up, actually.
I thought you wanted me to take all nine, so we did all three.
No, 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 no. David, I appreciate it.
Well, that's, I got us through this cocktail napkin part because I know the lore is important to everybody, but the lore is kind of a lie.
I'm, I'm glad you, I'm glad you clarified that. That is not a cocktail napkin.
Well, i- if it is, I want the cocktail that goes with it. All right, I'll be back.
Any more?
No additional speakers.
We're back to council.
I'll make the motion, please. I'm going to make this uh, option two on the consent agenda. Excuses, oh, I, I quit the discussion for that, don't, I mean, make the motion. Uh, motion approved first reading of ordinance zero uh, two zero two two dash zero five, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance, chapter twelve entitled site plans. Section twelve point two entitled procedures, section A, number seven and eight, and section twelve point seven entitled amendments and expiration. Subsections D and E establishing an effective date and providing for repeal and severability, comma, option two to be submitted on the consent agenda.
Second.
You had the motion.
Yeah, I, 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 I did option two because you know, the only downside I see to this is notification and the public's awareness of something that's going on. And so if we do option two in the consent agenda, it will be advertised to the public, it will be out there. Um, if someone disagrees with it or has something to say about it. Uh, or if they find something wrong with it, whatever, they can get up and call the public. Mention that, and then anyone on council can have it pulled from the consent agenda. And so that gives the public um, an opportunity to uh, find something to vent, uh, but it still gets the administrative stuff out. Reduces the amount of staff time at both meetings. So I think you've come up with a I, I really like things like this when they come forward. I, y'all deserve our congratulations. And Luke, this is great work.
I don't think he meant that, I think you corrected it. I think he corrected it.
Vice Mayor, you had the second.
I gave a, a second on this because I, I believe that council member Morris picked the correct option. I would have a concern with the council not being able to at least take a look at site plans. Uh, because if you review all of the uh, uh, standards that are utilized, you will find that there are at least a few that are might ambiguous and interpretable. And I think that it needs to go to the council so that when those issues presents, present themselves, as well as some other kinds of issues. The council be the, will be the final arbitrator on whether a site plan is approvable or not. I know that uh, uh, our council has said that uh, there really is absolutely no latitude. I have never seen legal situation where there is no latitude. So that's the reason why I, I support what uh, council member Morris is uh, picked as the option.
Let me get a clarification uh, from, from uh, council member Morris. You, you were talking about having it on the consent agenda to be pulled if it needs to be, or, or as a regular uh, agendaized item on the, on the, on a meeting.
Well, it, it would. Well, I modified option two, saying that, that it still required council approval. And that would be on the consent agenda. And so if someone disagreed with it, they could step the podium and say, I disagree. Uh, someone, anyone on council could then pull it off the consent agenda for another meeting or for review or whatever it needed.
That's the clarification I was looking for. I, I like that a lot.
Former Vice Mayor Silva.
With the option two whereby it's going to the council under a consent agenda. Uh, Luke, if you could explain to me again, the notification that would be going out if it were a consent agenda item, understood it could be pulled and brought back as a regular item versus just putting it on the regular agenda, not the consent agenda. What's the difference in the notification process, et cetera?
None.
None.
That I can think of.
Okay, oh, that's.
None. Same notification procedure, so.
But Luke, it, it still saves your time, right? I mean, now, now you're just putting the same stuff you would have developed anyway into the.
That is correct.
And if there is an issue, it can be, it could be looked at.
Right.
And then passed anyway because it meets the criteria. Okay, Councilman Monacino?
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me compliment the Chairman Vorus. Um, he's been at this quite a while. And uh, he's made recommendations here on these three agenda items. Um, he got it done. And uh, my compliments, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, my comments here on this uh, agenda item number three, and as the planning director suggested, there's two more of these uh, zoning things. This is the first time that I've seen this, well, in this item number three, this is the first time I've seen this, and I have not had a chance to research this thing entirely. I mean, we had questions here with regard, who gets notifications, ma- mailers? I mean, I would have liked to have investigated, what are the ramifications of this? And agenda item number four, and agenda item number five. I suggest council should have been involved in with this, um, along with a bigger public meeting. So my recommendation would be let's continue this.
We have a motion on the floor that we need to vote on. Mr. Sims is, is shaking his head, yes. So we'll go ahead.
Can I, can I?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, you can't make a motion to continue at this point because we had the first motion that we have to do.
And I have a comment.
Can I make an amendment?
You can ask.
You can ask for it if you get a second, then we'll vote on your amendment, and then if amended, then we'll vote on the original motion.
I see McGuire's holding his hand up too, I didn't. But not yet, Tom, hang on a minute.
Yes, certainly.
My amendment would be to continue this so that we could hold workshops together, council and the commission to explore all, all these recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, that actually isn't an amendment. What you're saying is vote this down and then continue. I think, I'm not sure what you just said is an amendment. What you're asking to do is, is to, is to prevent discussion on the item. If you wish to amend it, you could. Yours really isn't an amendment, yours is, you, you want, you want this voted down and then tabled. So I think you, you now, your council needs to vote on it, and if they vote it down, then you could recommend that it be tabled. You would recommend that it directly become, because then to be tabled, you direct it comes back for consideration.
So right now, we vote on Mr. Morris's.
Oh, but I bet, but apparently we have another counselor who has a question.
Oh, yeah, Councilman McGuire, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'd like to note that all of us council members.
We can't hear you, you got yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now? Is this better?
I've been waiting for this for seventeen years.
Can you hear me?
Unfortunately, I can hear you now.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Council has been criticized in the community for following the law. And this is a comment primarily for the new council coming in. That we need to follow the law and be prepared that when we do, we will be criticized in the community. But we have to hold firm, follow the law, and do what we can to explain to people uh, what the ramifications are. Sometimes those people don't even want to speak to us. However, we do have an obligation uh, to follow the law, and we have to be careful to do so. Thank you.
All right, so now we, we vote on Councilman Morris's. Okay, all those in favor of motion with the amendment, which is uh, option number two, uh, to be consent agenda. Uh, all those in favor signify, signify by saying aye. No. Okay, we, so do I need, I, we need to do a, a roll call now because uh, one member voted no.
Councilmember Ray, yes. Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Monacino.
No.
Councilmember Morris.
Aye.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, yes, motion carries, six, one. We'll move on to the next one, which is going to be uh, council discussion approval of first reading of orders, twenty twenty two dash zero six, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance. Chapter fourteen entitled officers, boards, and commissions, section four point one, fourteen point one, entitled planning commission subsection C entitled duties number four. Establishing an effective date and providing for repeal and severability. Mr. Councilman.
Yes, Mayor members of council, this is uh, the second step in the, in the three here. This is for chapter fourteen, section fourteen point one, under the planning commission uh, requirements, C duties number four. Four currently reads to hear, review, and make recommendations to the council on all applications for development, including subdivisions, flats, site plans, specialty use permits, and any other permit or review processes provided in this ordinance or the subdivision ordinance. This amendment would simply strike site plans uh, from the commission purview. And answer any questions you may have.
Council?
I just.
Vice Mayor?
Now, what it, what this would do is uh, simply uh, tailor the rest of the uh, uh, ordinances that refer to the responsibilities of the planning commission to meet what we, we just decided on.
Correct, it doesn't subrogate what you've just done or what you may do in the next chapter.
Thank you.
There's public comment.
David Phelps.
I knew that.
Okay, are we on the section two portion of the show for tonight? We're on. Item four. Yes, I know, but what they do over here is they don't put the meat, they just put the agenda, so I don't know what page you're on, on what you're doing. Do you have, you have a page that says the town of Cave Creek ordinance, chapter twelve entitled site plan, section twelve entitled amendments and. And is that part of the agenda addressing currently?
It's got site plans in two places that are struck from the uh, from the ordinance.
So the part that I want to discuss with you is, uh, there's, there's been a suggestion to go ahead and have the minor amendments to a previously approved site plan may be authorized by the zoning administrator. That does not give me heartburn, and neither should you get heartburn from that. Major amendments to a previously approved site plan shall be reviewed and approved by the commission and council following the same procedures described in this ordinance is completely struck. And I don't agree with that. It should then come back to you for another one of your consent agenda items. And oh, by the way, when you put that on the consent agenda, make sure you put public comment down. Maybe it can't really go on a consent agenda. So the little things can happen when we're all.
So all you do is you contact one of the people sitting up here and say, please pull that because you need to discuss it.
So that's before the meeting or during the meeting?
I probably, either one would probably work.
See, this just gets a little bit crazy when we're going to do that kind of thing. Ernie, I want, I want to work with you on this. I'm just saying as for procedure, if somebody called me and said, hey, what do I do? I want to see this site plan pulled. I would, excuse me, normally say go to the meeting, and when it's your turn to speak, call, at, you know, consent agenda item, public comment period. Tell them you'd like it pulled, and they'll pull it. However. Just a slight detail, anyway.
There, there may be some way to achieve that, maybe not, Mr. Sims.
He raises a good point, but you
Uh-oh.
We, we've already blown it, they already voted on this.
No, no, the, the people that voted for it can ask to vote on it again.
Uh, well, here's where I think we, you raise a very good point, but I would suggest is that we've already said that any, that this would be an amendment to a site plan. I think the minute should reflect that, 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 that it would have to be posted. Any, it would have to be posted, and you, you then could ask that it be taken off the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Well, it can be taken off the consent agenda by any council.
Yes.
Well, it calls the public, a telephone call.
You're not allowed to address an agenda item that called to the public. Am I wrong?
Pull it off, you, you, you would have to be pulled off. Because right now, the public would stand up and say, this is on the consent agenda, I'm going to ask that they pull it off.
Okay, we'll, we'll start a new rule. Apologize, Bob, I didn't mean to.
I'm, I'm learning too.
Typically, when I come here and I want to speak. Am I talking to you? No, my lips are moving.
Look this way, but talk sideways.
The eyes are right. And the eyes have. In all seriousness. Changing the format that you typically use to allow the public to approach you on an item just for this one issue seems a little bit cockeyed. And I would suggest that we agree tonight on a way for you to review it that is already following our standards. So it would be down in the B section, not in the consent section. I couldn't say anything because I was sitting back there and I'd already given burned up in three minutes. Anyway.
If it were me, I probably wouldn't allow public comment on this thing.
I never thought that about you, Ernie. So, do mistakes happen with site plan review in town? I would ask you, who approved the Buffalo chip? That thing is an unmitigated disaster. And we all feel bad for it. Um, I do think our criteria standards need to be revised for review of the site plans so that we can evolve as a community with the developments that are coming to town. If you want to leave the commercial bell road look alone, I get it. I can see what's going on down there fifteen or twenty years from now, when those two inch round trees grow into something you can park your car under, we'll all be happy with it. But right now, when you pull into the intersection of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road, what looks like would be in Cave Creek is actually in Carefree.
Mr. Sims.
I have a suggestion. Th- this has already been voted on. It is first read. We have a second read coming back. The, the problem is is you don't want every minor, what is a, a minor amendment could be a very minor change. We don't want to put that on the consent agenda. Why don't we, you raised a good point. We'll, we'll have a second read to see, I would. You raised a good point. We'll have a second read to see. I would suggest, Mr. Bob, Councilmember Morris's idea about consent agenda is. I can't define major and minor at all. And I don't know what it means. And so to to make Luke bring to you on a consent agenda, changing a a access. Cut out for by two feet. That'd be a minor amendment. You shouldn't have to come to you. So we have we have a second read and we'll let us consider. I would suggest suggest. That we make sure that that if you see, if if you get a applicant gets wind or the neighbors get wind of a of a what they perceive to be a major amendment, which is what you're asking. Then we could we could consider that at the next read to see if we need to define that. My hope is that we can accomplish this by by noticing it at the the true initial site plan. And then we default to the zoning administrator to accomplish any amendments. And if if truly that causes. A difficulty, then we can come back and make a change. But we this is the first read. We can address your point second.
Is that okay? And that's the point regarding when somebody would want to have.
Okay, three minutes. Five minutes, actually.
He's trying to be clear on this.
Yeah.
I didn't jumble it up.
Okay, five minutes.
Let him speak.
All right.
All right.
Are there any more?
No additional speakers.
Uh, we're back to council for a motion. Let me let me make one here. A motion to approve first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero six. Orders to the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance, chapter fourteen entitled Officers, Boards and Commissions, section fourteen point one, entitled. Planning Commission subsection C, entitled Duties, uh number five, establishing an effective date and providing for repeal and severability.
Second.
Yeah. Um, all I'm gonna say is is I and this this really goes to the previous agenda item, but I I have have seen a site plan where. Uh, the developer was precluded from using a public road and it it made my skin crawl when I saw that one. The guy could have really absolutely. Crucified us on it. And and that's the kind of thing that 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 um that elected officials do. When they when they take the uh responsibilities over from the from the professionals on staff. Vice Mayor?
Now, the only comment I'll make is that this is the first reading. There's going to be a second reading. There's going to be a a new crew up here and not totally, but partially. Uh, so there there may be some different viewpoints uh given, and I assume that they may talk to uh. Uh Attorney Sims and staff relative to anything that they might uh feel would be appropriate changes. I think that the way that this is constructed, though, is going to be effective. It does. It does what we meant to do in the first uh agenda item. And not, well, I should say number three agenda item. And um. I I don't think that we need to have a lot of controversy over this. It it seems to be pretty clear cut. And whether it's a consent agenda, you know, a major minor amendment. That is something subsequent to the decision that either would be made on the consent agenda. Or if the uh something was taken off of a consent agenda and and the and the council reviewed it. And then I would say staff can make a decision on whether it warrants going back to the council for any any reason at all. Thank you.
You have the council?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Monacino?
My position is the same on this agenda item as it was on the previous one. This was done without any involvement of council. And oddly enough, I agree with Mr. Phelps that um public should be involved in uh this matter.
Yeah, put us in jeopardy for uh action from uh, yeah, all right. Let's do a vote a voice, a voice call or roll call vote.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Monacino.
No.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, yes, motion carries six zero. Move on to Gen item number five, which is council discussion approval, first reading of order twenty twenty-two dash zero seven. North of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance, chapter three entitled Commercial Zone, section three point one, entitled Commercial Buffer. Parent CB zone subsection A entitled Purpose. Number one in sub and section three point two entitled Town Core Commercial, Prince TCC. Zone subsection A entitled Purpose, number one, in section three point three entitled General Commercial, Prince GC Zone. Subsection A entitled Purpose, number one, establishing an effective date and providing for repeal and severability. Mr. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor Members of Council. This this is the last uh section of the zoning ordinance that would need to be um addressed. Should council choose to remove the planning commission uh from the purview of of reviewing site plans uh based on the action taken earlier. Staff would recommend option two as your um as your suggested motion. Then one other thing was born out of the planning commission hearing on the twentieth. And a and once another reason why I asked um both Chairman Boris and Vice Chairman Brechner here this evening was to uh discuss that a little bit. And that was uh section three point one is currently entitled Commercial Buffer CB. Um, and the commission further recommended while we had this section of the the ordinance open. Um, and we're addressing item number A one that we uh that the town council maybe consider uh changing that name. So I'll turn it over to um. Vice Chairman Brechner.
Sure. Thank you.
Luke, before you walk, let me ask one little question here about change in CB to intermediate commercial. Will that in any way that you can foresee negatively affect? All the all of the state trust land out on Carefree Highway area that is is actually. We're not going to change the the uses or regulations are, but. Are they going to have a connection fit when they see us messing with the zoning that was in that agreement?
Uh, Mayor, well stated. I actually do have it noted. Um, should this um change be entertained or or given first reading? I will be reaching out to ASLD and just letting them know that we are considering changing the name, not the uses. Or any of the bulk regulations associated with that hundred and twenty acres of commercial zone property that the state trust land has um invested in.
Yeah, I'd hate to get them mad at us.
Me too.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Uh. Director of. Community Development.
Development Services, whatever you want to call them.
I blew it already. Okay. I, first off, I think the uh this change and essentially is a name change. Is not a bad idea. It's a good idea. It's fine. But. What I have an issue with is that, first off, Commercial Buffer shows up. In the specific area plan. There's no request to modify that here. So that's a piece that's left out there that is not reflected in this. Chapter three. Three point one B two B. Which relates to um. Uh, I think usable uses. It, there's a CB in there that is not modified. I don't think that's modified. In fact, it doesn't even show up here. Uh, B two B. It doesn't show up here and it's part of three point one, at least the the last piece I got on uh the ordinances. And in three point four. Uh, one point seven point B. Outdoor lighting. Uh, there's a specific reference to Commercial Buffer. Uh, next one on pools. There's a specific reference to Commercial Buffer. Three point five, the use descriptions. CB is uh, you know, re- rather uh prevalent in there. So it seems to me that they're either either through oversight or. Trying to get things done on a timely basis. A number of things were were missed. But what that led me to do was to look at the commercial or to the general plan. There is no land description for Commercial Buffer in general plan. I think there should be one for intermediate uh commercial. There is something in mixed use in there, but in the zoning ordinance, there's nothing about mixed use. You know. And I'm just suggesting that there might be more things to do before this is a complete uh product. Sure. Uh, please answer.
Yes. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, um, it wasn't an oversight. It's it would change three point one, which is the title heading of Commercial Buffer to to another term. And then everywhere that I is identified elsewhere in the ordinance will be changed. So that's not, that's not something that requires each section where you have Commercial Buffer. Where we would be renaming the main. Three point one is Commercial Buffer, that that heading. So everything comes from that.
Does that follow through the table three in three point five?
Correct. That would be whatever the two letter designation is that it's renamed to or three letter in the case of Town Core Commercial. We've done that before. We've changed the title.
Even though the text isn't here.
Right.
It's a given.
Correct.
Okay.
It would be updated to reflect that change of name.
Then I'm I'm all I'm doing is offering a suggestion that people take a look at the general plan, make some modifications there. And uh and take a look at the specific area plan, make a modification there. And uh and then I won't have a chance to say yes to it when it comes along later, but I would say yes if I were there.
Rance Integrated Circuit?
You'll have the chance, Vice Mayor, to say yes as a participant to the meeting as a resident. He has that option.
Gentlemen, listen. You 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 had a presentation on this, I believe.
I I didn't have a presentation.
Oh, you don't?
But I'm prepared to talk about it.
Well, I I, in that case, any questions from council?
Actually, I I do.
Oh, you do? Oh. Oh, well, please.
I just didn't prepare one ahead of time. It's in my head.
Oh.
Um, wow. So a little background on on why I proposed this name changes as a friendly amendment to this current agenda item. I believe the title Commercial Buffer in our zone is a misnomer.
Speak up, please.
By by having the name Commercial Buffer. I believe the interpretation of that mean by the public lends itself to what it is not. It is a is just a name. The uses within that zone are outlined within that section, mostly within three point five. And because it causes significant angst and strife amongst the public and confusion because they're reading, you know, at our last uh meeting last week. We had um Karen Teats who spoke on behalf of a lot of residents. Site definition of the word buffer. And so they're reading something into our zoning ordinance in that section. That isn't necessarily so. Yeah, this is a an error on our part in the in the naming of this particular. Uh zoning category uh for Commercial Buffer. Now, how much does this really impact us? Not a whole lot. Um, we have it 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 and I checked on this recently. Because this really comes into play primarily for rezoning cases, right? Because existing property owners that have a Commercial Buffer. Uh zone to their land, they have their uses. We can call it whatever we want. They still have their uses. They're unaffected. It really comes into play when we're entertaining a rezone or an upzone. From one property to Commercial Buffer. That's when it really comes into play for the public when they're looking at, well, how is this a buffer? Right? Um, they're looking at that word and we only have about a dozen properties left that have a land use classification or an overlay. For, you know, within our land use map and our general plan for use that is more dense or more intense than the current zone. And that is a few in the SAP. Dozen more in the area eighteen and the same for area ten. Other than that, we don't really, you know, the cake's baked, right? So I'm only trying to mitigate this angst amongst the public. Uh angst that you guys may receive and not have any confusion about what this is. Okay, um and and because we were there working on site plans and we were right in the section. Naming this zoning category, it seemed to make sense to um if we're if possible, to remove any confusion or angst amongst the public. To do that. Granted, intermediate commercial doesn't leave us with a light commercial or something like that. But because we have so few properties left, a dozen. It i- i- in my view, and we've discussed this as a planning commission, didn't make sense to go through an entire effort to try and create a new zoning category. Over a dozen parcels. Um, we have the ability to impose conditions at any time. A property is is uh seeking to be rezoned as evidenced by what we just recently did. And that seems to be the most effective way to deal with what little we have left in conjunction with perhaps removing any confusion about. What what the Commercial Buffer Zone entitles people to do within that zone. Um, by virtue of the title. And that was it.
Question from council? Councilman Morris, Mayor Letmore.
I agree with you. It's a poor title. I mean, uh, Commercial Buffer is just a touchstone. Every one of the cases that comes in here, it's got stuff mixed all in it. It's got all kinds of things. On the other hand, the people that generally are concerned with this sort of thing kind of understand what it means now. And um. So I'm worried that, in fact, I conclude that it will not be received positively. Be received as a as a means of. Confusing things. We've got a substance, some really substantive improvements and. I I think this one here might have a negative. It might take away from some of it. So I appreciate your comments on that.
We're damned if we do and damned if we don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so in in my mind, I was thinking, which is better? I think it's better just to to be a clear um and not have confusion in the name. I think there's. You you we're not changing any substantive provision within the zoning ordinance, just the name. And my experience is is that. You you know, the public's perception on things is often wrong. Um, and we can't change that no matter what we do. And so. To to leave it as Commercial Buffer might let the public say, ah, they're still trying to deceive us with this buffer. Um, you change it to intermediate crush. Oh, they're trying to change, you know, there's no way to run from that, you know, but the best possible thing I thought was to have a ti- a name, a title that is more accurate.
What about timing? We've got some really good substantial changes that that really have some impact. And uh is this going to add or subtract from that effort?
What substantive changes?
I mean, do you think that the the perception that the public has is their perception and we can't change that as we sit here tonight? But.
Well, that's pretty fluid. You know, that their perception is very subjective to the person. You know, e- each individual resident. Um, I've experienced that. They all have varying subjective opinions and views and interpretations. I find that most often it's because of a lack of knowledge, a lack of information about how our town works. The makeup of our zoning rights, our laws, why we do the things we do. You know. I I you know, and and it's a source of frustration for me to to understand these concepts of why we do the things we do only to be faced with someone telling me I'm corrupt or I'm being paid or whatever it may be. But uh, it's a constant battle that you guys face. I face it, but the chairman Boris faced it over the years. Um, but we still do the best job we can and the best for the town. Any chance we have to make improvements, I I seize on it as as you like. Okay, so we're here tonight on site plans and making improvement. While we're at it, I thought, here's a chance for another little improvement.
Go for it.
Okay, I I and I I will take offense if you say no on this. Site plans I'm a little more passionate about, but this one I think is another improvement that we can make. And uh, I don't see a reason not to.
Mayor?
Councilmember Roy, I saw her first.
Is intermediate commercial a common term in?
Is intermediate commercial a common term in the planning world?
So I researched this one, um, for available names, neighborhood commercial, you know, uh, community commercial. Um, these were all, uh, vetted and discussed and intermediate seemed to be the most fitting because they all also carried potential miscon- misconceived interpretations of the name, you know, neighborhood commercial. Well, that's going to be the neighborhood, you know, uh, community. Wait, what's that? And so when you look at the actual uses in commercial buffer, retail office, you know, stuff like that. It's an intermediate type of zone and we're not, because we have so little commercial land, you know, to develop in our town. And especially so little left. We're left to basically analyze, I believe, the correct ways on a case by case basis. Take a look at the, at what then applicant is seeking to rezone to and what's appropriate there. And that's our bite at the apple. That's our chance at that time. Because they're seeking more rights, right? So when they're seeking more rights, we can condition and do whatever we want. But in terms of available names, I did look at it in depth. And, uh, what other municipalities? And in fact, I think the Luke, and you can correct me wrong. I think it was called intermediate commercial before we changed it to commercial buffer in, within Maricopa County. Yeah.
Commercial, they still do.
Yeah, they still have intermediate commercial. Um, and so we went and changed it. And my understanding is that it didn't really become an issue until recently, because most properties were being rezoned to general commercial. It wasn't until recent that we started utilizing the commercial buffer zone. And, and that's why it's now become an issue. And, and mostly because of that buffer, uh, meaning, you know, a word within it.
Former Vice Mayor.
I happen to agree with Councilmember Morris, but only from the standpoint, it'll be a very short-lived, short-term. Perhaps confusion with the public thinking something's changed. Community through proper communication, I think they'll realize it's, it's, it's semantics. It's maybe the word. And I think I really agree with Vice Chair Bruckner's observations that from a long-term point of view for the twelve more parcels, whatever the number is, uh, it would add some clarity that it's not a buffer, that there's not certain things that the public perceives of can going in there vis a vis an intermediate commercial. So, uh, I tend to support the long-range potential effect versus the short-term and, and I would support it.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Kaufman a, a question. It would, it would seem to me that making some changes well, to, to the zoning ordinances while not making a change to the specific area plan is going to leave the specific area plan an orphan. Because if there's no CB and it specifies CB without a change, and I think the, the general plan, because the SAP is in the general plan, it's referenced and incorporated, I think. Without that done, uh, I, I don't know, is there'd be a way to do, uh, any kind of multi-residential type stuff uh, without that change. Um, and, and that runs me back to the definitions. You said that there'd be some changes made simply because, uh, some previous things had been mentioned. The definition of, uh, uh, commercial buffer for residential is it's either single family or MR. MR has a limitation of eight dwelling units per acre. Is that going to be changed or is that going to stay the same and just have CB replaced by IA?
That, yes, your second one.
Okay. So there's, there's still that.
No substantive, uh, changes to any of the uses or bulk regulations in that zone as previously reported.
Okay, but I, I do, I, I don't know. I legally, uh, uh, maybe our attorney can, um, tell me whether I'm correct about, uh, the specific area plan becoming essentially an orphan.
And to that point, no, because the, the specific area plan allows intensities up to commercial buffer. But it also identifies specific uses that are allowed and prohibits certain uses, uh, that would otherwise be allowed. And the, the specific area plan also allows for MR zoning considerations as well.
And MR only, uh, as a subset of the CB?
No, you can, you can zone, you can request a zone change to MR in the specific area plan.
I just read it today. I, I read it today. I, I, I didn't see that. I, the only way I saw.
It's a less intense zone.
CB to MR was in three point five.
No, in, in the specific area plan, because commercial buffer is a commercial zoning category, it's more intense than a residential category. Even in MR. So for example, the, uh, residential community behind Starbucks was rezoned to MR. Um, I can't remember how many years ago that was now, but.
Oh, yeah, that, you mean.
So that was rezoned to MR. Their, their original, their original proposal was commercial buffer. That was denied. They requested MR. That was approved. And that's the thirty-two homes that are back there now.
Okay, but, well.
It's a, SAP is not an orphan.
As long as there are none of those little, uh, problematic things, uh, I, I certainly have no problem with, uh, this. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Does David have one on this one too? He's standing up. I see him.
I was gonna call Paul Elkma.
Yeah.
Either, either one.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Council, David Phelps, again. For twelve parcels left, for the idea that there's any kind of obfuscation attempt, I wouldn't do it. I would help clarify it by adding CB and maybe in paren's mixed use or something of that nature. Because it truly is a mixed use category. Commercial buffer that's been around thirty years, the reason why people think it's going to be less intensive than commercial is because it intended to be that way. It just didn't turn out that way. It is in fact, less intense commercial uses because of the times of operation. The kinds of things we were hoping to attract, the doctor's offices, the dentist's offices, the professional services, people like this guy only works part-time. It was important in the beginning to get our own nom- nomenclature away from the county. Because we are not the county. We are Cave Creek. So I agree with you in part. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
That was like a minute and twenty seconds.
Well. Good evening, folks. So you get both sides of the story here. I'm Paul Elkma, three eight nine two six North fifty-seventh place. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Regarding ordinance zero seven here. This item is one which is an important start to the work described in our twenty twenty-one general plan. As much needed refinement to our ordinances. The ordinance named commercial buffer has been used as a catch-all zone. I think there are twenty-three or, or, uh, more options that you can use.
Twenty-six, I think.
Twenty-six. Um, and it has, it has been a major source of confusion uh, and friction between commercial projects, proposals, and the neighborhoods which have proximity. I compliment the planning staff for beginning this conversation and offer strong support for fully defining intermediate commercial zoning. And with the help of the community to develop effective buffer language as part of the overlay, um, planning category. These actions to develop the clarifying language are respectful to the investors of commercial applications. And directly responsive to the will of the people as defined in the general plan. Thank you.
No additional speakers.
We're now back to council for a motion, please.
I'll make it if no one else will. Uh, motion to approve first reading of ordinance oh two zero two two dash zero seven, an ordinance of the mayor and council of town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona. Amending the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance, chapter three entitled commercial zones, section three point one entitled commercial buffer CB and paren zone subsection A entitled purpose, uh, comma number one. And section three point two entitled town core, uh, commercial and paren TCC zone. Uh, subsection A entitled purpose number one. And section three point three entitled general commercial and paren GC zone. Subsection A entitled purpose number one establishing an effective date and providing for repeal and severability.
Second. Comments?
I, I do think it makes sense. And for the comments I made previously, I, I just echo those. I think for the long term, it makes sense. It provides clarity for our residents and, uh, it'll, uh, enable the plan commission, the council, I, I, I feel to be more uh, effective and have maybe less problems with the, uh, residents because it, it does carry a commercial word in it and intermediate. So it's much better than buffer, which opens it up to almost anything. So I support it.
Mayor Let Morris.
I, I, I don't support it for two reasons. One is I think it adds confusion and it goes into a, a, a climate where perceptions are rule the day, especially when it comes to property uses. The second thing, I think the timing's off. I think that I would be better suited if we, if, if it were, I'd have no objection to changing commercial buffer, the name. Uh, it is a terrible name. Uh, is that category has caused no end to problems. But I think the timing is better suited to a future when we make a substantive change to that specific zoning category. Um, then it doesn't have the appearance of obfuscation. Um, so I will be voting no.
I can remember sitting on the, that chair down there. Oh, Tom, go ahead, Tom.
I, I'm concerned that, and this goes back to what, uh, we can just, Mayor, can you hear me? This goes back to what future Mayor Morris was saying. I, I'm concerned that people are going to see this change see it as a larger change than it really is. They're used to commercial buffer. And I'm afraid they're going to look at this as being the council trying to make a much larger change than we truly are. Uh, I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Morris that at this point, it probably makes sense to bring forward the changes that we're talking about, but maintain the term commercial buffer because I think the public understands that term.
So years ago I was sitting in that chair on the end down there. And commercial buffer, uh, we were describing uses for it. This was shortly after the state land department had allowed us to, uh, annex a bunch of stuff and, and, and create commercial buffer. And we were defining uses and the council sitting there looking at the word buffer in that, uh, voted six to one to not allow, uh, retail sales and commercial buffer. And, uh, of course, after the meeting I went and asked, uh, you know, what do you think the state land department thinks about the diminution of value for all these properties that we just created? And the next, next meeting, we actually went back and changed it. So even at the level of elected officials, the word buffer has had some confusion over the years. I wholeheartedly support this, but I think we probably need to go ahead and do a roll call on this for sure.
Mr. Mayor, if you, if you vote for this, we still need the amendment about the consent agenda because this also includes town council. If you vote against it, you can then add the consent agenda. If you vote for it, you need to have the amendment that you wanted in the earlier one.
Well, I didn't need consent agenda.
Pardon?
It, it, it's, oh, I see me because the option one, option two standpoint.
We need the same, same.
Well, you just add option. Well, whoever makes the, makes the, the motions been made and it did not say option two. So.
But my problem is if you, if they vote for it, then that will be lost.
Yeah, but the vote right now is on something that doesn't, you have a choice in here and the choice is not made by the motion that's on the table.
Mr. Mayor, I would offer that to add option two to my action needed.
I, I, I will accept that since you, since I was the second. Now we can vote.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
No.
Councilmember Markino?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris?
No.
Councilmember Ray?
No.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Mayor Bunch?
Uh, yes, four, three. The next council can shoot it down if they want to. All right, we're on agenda item number six.
Oh, yeah. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for your consideration of our requests.
Thank you so much for your nine, thank you so much for your nine years of service. I can remember standing in the parking lot of the Buffalo Chip and us having a long discussion when we first met about, uh, about things. And I, I had no idea you were going to get involved and, and, uh, was your hair white then? I, mine wasn't. All right, we're up to agenda item number six, which is council discussion approval resolution R twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting and amending the monthly service charges and usage rates for water service in the Cave Creek Water Service Area.
I, I move we take a break.
Okay, can we take, yeah, let's take a five-minute break.
Well, second and third.
Yeah. Who are we missing?
Regis here. I was coming in that would leave.
David, David, we lost David. You know, I had I had ties stapled to the ceiling, but they took them down. Like like Pinnacle Peak used to be.
Yeah, well, it's that pinnacle peak patio, wasn't it? The steakhouse.
Yep.
They had good steak.
Boy, did they. I thought for a while the steak master that cooked them was down at the Buffalo. Is he still there doing that?
I don't know. I haven't been in there.
All right, can we get? Are we still missing David?
He's out. He's just outside the door.
Okay. Um, yeah, I do.
What are we up to? Seven? Number six. Six. Oh, man. What's this one?
Stuff that we spent so much time on, we really ought to shoot.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, I I get the hint.
All right, like I said, we're up to agenda item number six, which is council discussion approval resolution R twenty twenty two dash nineteen, a resolution, the mayor and town council. Of town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting and amending the monthly service charges and usage rates for the water service in the Cave Creek Water Service area. I don't see a lot of new people in the council chambers. Sean, that's a hint. We've we've heard it.
Well, mayor and council, with your permission, we'll actually discuss a real quick presentation on on item six, seven, and eight. Obviously, they're separate actions, different resolutions, just to give a general overview where we're at. And I will be as quick as I can.
Excellent.
To get mess something up, Brian, I don't know what I've done something with the controller.
This is good. Thank you.
Moving on. Again, real quick summary, we are, we did a study we've been working on for a while. Kevin Barnett is to my right. Usually we are used to seeing Kevin on the screen, so he's in person. So we're near the end of our study. That's what that indicates typically. The town has been looking at our utility rates to make sure that they can support the operations and and the goals that we have moving forward. We did a ten year forecast study for both operational costs and capital costs. We are looking to split the cost of the the base rates that users are charged regardless of usage in the volumetric fifty fifty. We got fairly close to that. That was sort of the goal. But really, the biggest goals are to highlight on this this page, which are make sure we can provide the revenues to support the ongoing operation and capital improvements for the. The funds, the different funds, and those being the Cave Creek Water Fund, Desert Hills Water Water Fund and the Cave Creek Waste Water Fund. As well as trying to meet some of the town's financial goals. Those are including debt service coverage of one point two times revenue. That's important as we move forward in large capital projects, make sure that we can fund these. And take on things like new loans. We're also looking to make sure that in in the case wastewater side is is truly making it an enterprise fund. For a number of years now, the town has actually had to support that with other revenue streams. So making it enterprise fund in in terms, and what I mean by that is that the the revenues generator enough to play for the operation and maintenance and and capital improvements. Okay, Brian, I mean, it's not working me. Next slide, Brian. So twenty twenty was the last time we looked at the the rates. What has happened since then is we've now have the settlement with Carefree. We are losing the five hundred fifty accounts. That also includes revenues. We had to take a look at that. We we've been looking at how we do the desert hills tie in. That's because the desert hill system has actually been supported by the Cave Creek Water System. Desert Hills only has its three operational wells, so it doesn't have enough capacity, production capacity to meet its demand. So ever since the town's. Taken over ownership, operation of that system in late two thousand and six, we've actually had to supplement it with some of the town C A P water supplies. So we tried to work on the the program to allow us to properly capture those costs. And part of that was developing a new wheeling rate for desert hills. Last year, we were able to get a new subcontract of municipal or of. Non-dominant agricultural water, C A P water for desert hills. There's a cost of that water, but it also means that if they're paying for a portion of their water resources, we they will be. Charged for treatment and delivery from the Cave Creek system. But if they have to dip into the municipal and industrial supplies, which are the Cave Creek systems, there's another fee associated with that. So I ripped the Band-Aid off. This is the proposed rates that the study recommended moving forward. I can see some fairly large ones up front, but it does taper off. It shows that we have some specific needs that we're trying to address. In the Cave Creek wastewater in twenty twenty three is a fairly large one because there's a a gap in the system. The fact that revenues are not supporting the operation there. So this moves us very quickly towards that goal. As you see, the resolutions, we're actually looking or looking for council to adopt a multi-year rate increase. One is it takes a long time to do these rates, rate increases, and by doing multi-years, it actually gives us some revenue stability for the enterprise funds. In twenty twenty, the report did recommend multi-year. Rate increases, council at that time elected only do the first year. We didn't have time to come back and do the update in twenty twenty one. So we're here in twenty twenty two. So we're. We're hopeful that council agrees with us and allows for the multi-years. This study going out to twenty twenty eight, at this point, we don't anticipate, or we would anticipate we'd come back before future councils to actually have a discussion about what we need. At that point, but at least this gets us in that direction and and sources and lets us have a revenue increase for the funds that we can rely on.
Excuse me, Mayor Sean.
Yes.
Did you point out that the last great increase on the wastewater had been twelve years ago?
I did not, uh, council member.
May I add that then?
Yes, you may. Yeah, so you're correct. Twenty two thousand and nine was the last time actually the wastewater rates were adjusted. So in the twenty twenty. Rate study, we did not touch the wastewater rates. So we're going back quite a ways with not having the revenues of. Being generated by the wastewater customer, support the actual operation of the wastewater fund. That's one of the biggest issues with wastewater. For desert hills, it was actually the cost of the water resources for the system to better equalize that out. And Kevin has more details, but I'll just give you a summary of the schedule. We've been talking for a while about this. We started in January. We're talking about the assumptions. We've come back to council a number of times. We've heard from council. We've done several adjustments. We're now at the the last phase where we've actually done the notice to raise rates and actually since that time, we've actually published the rate study and we've actually had a couple of meetings with council to continue to move forward and 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 get feedback. So tonight's action is having council adopt the rates. Again, this reception at three separate actions will be asking for you. And we set the dates coming effective in January. At this point, January ninth is the the Monday, January ninth is when we start the next set of reads. So we'd make the effective date, January ninth, for the future rates that we've asked to have done. That would be the first billing period so that the. The data, the reads actually does change every year. So we've made it give given staff the flexibility to make that decision. And we have done some outreach. We've set up a separate website for this on our webpage on the town's website. We've used news as announcements to make sure people were aware of this. So far, we've actually doubled the double the number of comments since we last spoke. Last time we spoke, we had received two comments on the website. We've now actually have four. One was. For wastewater, it was a citizen who was concerned about why he should have a higher rate when he's only a part-time resident, even though really the base rate is paying for the the system operation. So they're ready when they're there. One was from someone in desert hills that was actually supporting the rates. Another, a third one was actually someone just asking for some specific details. And another one was a Cave Creek person that was basically pointing out that of there were low water user, a small account, and there wasn't good much difference in their rates, which is actually a goal that council had given to us that. The low water users not be impacted. It's really, we're trying to promote the higher water users pay for more, and we're trying to promote conservation with our rates. So. Yeah. Okay, other outreach we've done is we've done newspaper notices. We've done notices in the bills. We did do a direct mailer to our water customers. The five thousand water and wastewater customers. We have nine hundred wastewater customers and and about five thousand water customers in total. We've received, we got about eighty came back to us. So we, the staff been working very diligently to make sure that we can get those addresses corrected. We also did direct outreach where we called the highest water users. What we actually used is is. Last month, the high water users were defined as customers that had over fifty thousand gallons of usage. And there was thirty eight of those customers in Cave Creek and twenty three in desert hills. So staff reached out. We weren't able to get in touch with everybody. But we did do that effort because those would be the customers most impacted by this because we did place the highest increases on the those higher water users. And some of the comments we got back, people specifically wanting to know how whether the rates were going to impact them, and they wanted to talk to us about what we could do moving forward for conservation with them. So that's there's some good feedback. Some were concerned, but again, obviously, it's going to be hitting their pocketbooks, but we wanted to be as transparent as we could to them as the reasons why it's it's really unnecessary. So again, pointing out that tonight, we're asking council to approve three separate actions. We're asking that we actually get the rate increases put in place for the next several years. Again, I don't think this, we won't come back to the future councils before the end of this study, study period that we've got promoted. Presented to you, but at least gives us that revenue stream that allows us to continue to move forward. So it'd be first. Billing period in January, so customers will see this rate increase in February, and we're proposing that that's when they would see it every year moving forward, that every every. January, we do the amendments, and then every February, people would see that would be something that we do some outreach towards every year. It also does take a fair amount of staff time because we actually have to go through all our billing codes and actually do the amendments. So it's it's something we want to do and sort of puts us into a cycle. So you'll see the three resolutions. Our twenty two, twenty twenty two, nineteen, twenty and twenty one, only asking council to do separate actions on. With that, I can pass off to Kevin so he can give you some more details specifically and whatever details you need.
All right. Thanks, Sean. We have another.
Yeah, it should be up there.
Is this like a test pattern?
It seems to be. Yeah, yeah, I can start with that. So Sean covered some of the beginning slides in his presentation anyways. So we were going to get into why we're conducting the rate study and the purpose of the rates. Here we go. Yeah, I did. Next slide. Yeah, there we go. So as Sean alluded to, we looked at the the water and sewer rates about two years ago, back in twenty twenty. There was only one year adoption at that point in time. As opposed to a multi-year plan, which we're looking at this time around. And as Sean mentioned, there's been some fairly significant changes since then to the care, the loss of the carefree customers. Of course, had an impact on on the water revenues. None of us, when we did the last study, anticipated inflation and costs would be going up as high as they have been the last year or so. So these are reasons why you would periodically do a rate study just to check in. The five-year plan is good. We hope that the projections that we've got in the five-year hold for the next five years, six years. But certainly if things more significant like the loss of carefree customers or. We, I think we anticipated the higher inflation for the next year after this one, and then it would tail off after that. But to the extent that things change there, the town might want to look at revisiting. The financial plan again. And then the purpose of the rate studying on top of making sure that we had the revenues generated that we need to. That we were distributing costs equitably amongst customers. And staff had some different customer classes that they wanted us to take a look at just to give them some more flexibility going forward. Next slide. So where we are in the current rate study process, we've been working with staff for the last couple of years, I think. On this one, looking at some different options, funding mechanisms, whether we were going to debt fund capital, cash fund capital. We've been before this group a few times, getting your advice, your insight, your thoughts. On how we can improve the rate structure recommendations. So we've taken all that into account to get to where we're at tonight. Next slide. So just, we've seen this before, but it's just a bit of a reminder. So this is the Cave Creek Water Cash Flows under the status quo. So right now, we've got revenues. Rate revenues and capacity fee revenues are not sufficient to meet our ongoing operations expenses. The the rate revenue is your number one revenue source, followed by capacity fees. So they're represented in the blue bar there, and then the red bar is the expenses every year. So you can see if we continue on the current path. We don't have the revenues generated to cover our costs. The two lines there, the purple line is what your debt service coverage requirement is. That's a one point two times coverage. The green line is where you're at. You're okay in the first couple of years. And then you dip below that that debt service coverage target, which would mean you were in technical default on your debt. Next slide. So this is the status quo for the desert hill scenario. Again, same same picture. The rate revenue and capacity fee revenue just isn't sufficient to cover your ongoing costs. The purple bar in this case represents the three months of O and M cash reserve that Sean mentioned. It's not a legal requirement, but it's good prudent financial planning to have three months of O and M so that you can cover your costs. In the event that something unexpected comes up, the green line represents what your actual cash balance is. You're well below. The purple line to begin with, and it just keeps getting worse as as we move forward. Next slide. So now we're looking at the wastewater. Again, your revenues aren't sufficient to cover your operating costs. And then that's your end of your cash balance. The purple being where it should be or the target and the green where it actually is. So with all that doom and gloom, if we move to the next slide. So why are we proposing to to increase water rate revenue? We need to meet. Our ongoing O and M costs. As I said, they've been going up higher than we anticipated in the last studies. We had to make an adjustment for that. The loss of the carefree customers. We've got some capital needs that have been identified over the next five years. Six point two million cash funded capital on the Cave Creek. 6.2 million cash funded capital on the Cave Creek side. There's also the Phoenix interconnect that we're proposing to debt fund. So there's going to be additional debt service associated with that. There's some desert hills projects and then meet the targeted cash reserve levels and and the debt service as well. Next slide. So we want to make a distinction here on the difference between revenues and rates. And it's really only going to apply in the first year. So Sean showed previously an 8% revenue increase for year one. So that's telling us we need to generate 8% more rate revenue in the upcoming year. That doesn't necessarily translate into an 8% rate increase for everybody, depending upon how you use water, what tier you fall in. It could be more than an 8% increase for you. It could be less than an 8% increase for you. The 8% is how much we need overall. Again, that only applies to the first year, though. In subsequent years, we're proposing across the board increases. So if we say we need 5% more revenue, all rates would go up by 5%. So it's really just that first year that we have the distinction between a revenue increase and a rate increase. So next slide. So this is a refresher of what Sean showed. So he had six years worth there. Five is a nicer number in my head, so I cut off the last year, but we are looking at the current year plus five. So we've got an 8% rate increase this year, followed by a couple of fours and a couple of threes. So the slide before we were looking at, we didn't meet the debt service coverage ratio. So that's that 1.20 times. So you can see with these increases, we're well above that 1.2 times. Part of the reason that we have the rate increases that we do, and we're showing the strong debt service coverage there in working with the town's financial advisor, Mr. Jim Strickland. He indicated to us as we were developing the plan that while WIF wants to see the 1.2 times coverage for the upcoming debt issuance, if you have 1.5 or higher, then your rate's going to be better. You don't have to have a special debt service reserve that gets funded. And there's a potential to eliminate the current debt service reserve, which would free up money for the for the town to use for other things. So that's why we're a little bit more aggressive and have a little bit stronger debt service coverage there than just the 1.2 minimum requirement. So next slide, please. So here's a better picture. So this is the the Cave Creek Water Cash Flow with the proposed increases. So you can see by the time we get out to 2027, there, we're pretty close on the revenues matching up with what our expenses are. And the green line representing our debt service coverage is much healthier than it was before. Again, in that nice 1.5 ish range that that WIF is hoping for. Next slide, please. So then we've got the the desert hills recommendations. So a little bit more aggressive on the first year for desert hills. You can again see that the target cash balance, that's that three month reserve at 850, 867,000. And even with the rate increase, revenue increase we're proposing in that first year, the actual cash balance is well short of what the the target is. So we're actually, it's going to take us to about 26, 27 before we get to that target cash balance or exceeded in this case. So next slide, please. So here's the picture on desert hills cash flow with the the increases proposed. So you can see the revenues are exceeding our our expenses in this case. And that green line is trending upwards the way we want it to be, so that you're no longer in a negative position. But you're actually funding that cash balance, which is the difference between the blue bars and the red bars there. That's that's funding that cash. So next slide. On the wastewater side, the main driver on the wastewater side was to fund O and M. Right now, your rate revenue isn't sufficient to cover your annual operations and maintenance expenses. And we've also got some capital needs that we need to address. But the main goal that we had on the wastewater side was by the end of five years, we wanted the rate revenue to be equal to what our annual O and M costs are. It reduces the reliance on the general fund. And again, that's only taking care of O and M. There's still capital that is over and above. So we would need further rate increases beyond that in order to to fully fund the capital from the wastewater utility.
And that that is still leaving that's that sales tax. There is an ongoing.
Correct. Yes, it's the the sales tax is still incorporated in our financials.
Still subsidized, even though not out of the general fund.
Correct. So next slide, please. So these are the the proposed increases on the wastewater side. So again, a big one in this first year, more moderate in the outer years. So you can see at 26, 27 there, the difference between rate revenue and O and M expenses is negative 12,000. By the time we get to 27, 28, we've closed that gap completely. So we do, we wanted to get there, but we wanted to get there over time as opposed to the rate shock of doing it all at once, or even in a two year increment. So next slide, please. So there we have have the picture there. So we've got the the target fund balance. It's still going down, but we're improving things. So it's not going down as drastically as it was in the previous slide. And you can see the blue bars are getting closer to the red bars by the time we get out to 2027. So next slide, please. And next slide. So the cost of service. So everything we've been talking about so far is how much more revenue do we need? The cost of service side of things is how are we going to get that revenue? So we use industry standard approaches. We unbundled the current customer classes. So whereas right now you have residential and commercial classes, we expanded those. We're proposing single family and multifamily. They're going to have the same rates, but at the same time, it'll allow staff to track those customers separately, so that in the future, if there is a desire to change the rates between the classes, there's more flexibility to do so. And we've further broken up the commercial class again, so that we can track the different customer classes and their uses. And then we allocate a cost based on fixed and variable costs and how each customer class uses the system. So next slide, please. So here we have the the base charges that we're proposing for the Cave Creek Water System. Some of the tweaks that we made to this based on council direction, council input before the 5H, three quarter inch and one inch is now going to be the same for those three meter sizes. And then you would see an incrementally higher base charge for the one inch and larger meters. The intent was to, as Sean said, try and get 50% of the revenue from the base charge and 50% from the volume rates. We got close to that. We faced it in, and I'll talk about that in the next slide as to why it's not exactly 50 50. So next slide, please. So one of the other changes that we made based on council direction in some of our past meetings was originally, we had the first two tiers, the zero to 10 and 10 to 20. They went down, the rates went down in the first year, only to go back up again in the second year and subsequent years. So we made the change so that those rates are going to be held constant throughout the study period as opposed to going down and then going back up. Because we held that constant, that shifted a little bit more of the revenue onto the volume side as opposed to the fixed charge side. So it was more of a 54% volume, 46% base charge, but we still wanted to try and keep within the spirit of that 50 50 split. So again, you can see the multifamily as a new class, but the rates are the same as the single family. Next slide, please. So then we've got commercial. Again, we've broken out some different commercial ones. I should have mentioned on the previous slide, too. We also took council's consideration in those upper two tiers to really send that conservation price signal and have higher rates in those upper tiers and less impact on the on the lower volume ones as Sean alluded to. So we've got commercial common areas and commercial irrigation. Next slide, please. And then commercial pools. So we had a separate rate class for them now. Next slide, please. And then the desert hills, the same philosophy, trying to get the 50 50 split between the base charge and the volume rate. Again, the 58, three quarter and one inch meters are all going to be the same within the one inch being incrementally higher at that point in time. Next slide, please. So we only have two customer classes on the on the desert hill side. Single family and commercial, again, trying to send that price signal for those upper two tiers to encourage water conservation and drive home that conservation message. Next slide, please. So on the wastewater rates, we're sticking with the the current approach of a residential base charge per month. There isn't a volume component on the wastewater side. And then on the on the non-residential side, we've got incrementally higher base charges based on the water meter size. And then the last line there, the interceptor device, that's new. Previously, we had the grease trap monitoring charge. It was a flow based charge based on on flows in working with Sean and his staff. We felt that it would be more equitable to change it to an interceptor device charge and charge based on a monthly charge as opposed to a flow component. So that's what we've got recommended here. Next slide, please. And then we've got the the same commercial flow rate categories as we had last time. They've been updated to reflect the the additional revenue needs. Again, with the change being the the grease trap monitoring flow charges dropped off, and it's been replaced by that interceptor device charge. Next slide, please. So with that, as Sean said, the new rates are proposed to go into effect January 9th of 2023. That's the start of the billing period. And then we would increase rates for the subsequent years based on the first whole billing period in January of each calendar year. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try and address them.
I don't see any. There is public hearing on this. Mr. Sims, I have a question. They have received, well, first of all, do you have any, anybody wants to speak public hearing? Open the public. Well, I'm not going to open it just yet. He has four online responses to the to the that he described to us before, not specific to which agenda item we're talking about. So in the, no, 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 they were, they were in there. They they sent responses in. So as we do the public hearing, should all four of those be included in in each one of these agenda items? There's three of them.
Then they didn't tell you which one to apply it to?
I want to make sure we do this right. Or could we just read all four of them for all three items and just cover our bases?
I would read them. Well, it's brand new to me. I see one wastewater, I see three water. Okay. Well, let's read one on what is that? Read the wastewater for the wastewater. And then read the the three others for the water. And the these people, are they are they all here right now? Are they?
Not that I'm aware of. They submitted these as an online comments.
Well, the the problem is, the issue is, this is a public hearing. These have to be, we have, they've asked to be spoken, but we don't need to read them three times. Let's read them one for the water, one for wastewater, and then read the other three for 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 one of the watering.
We got two waters, so one desert hills and cave creek, so.
Well, wait, are those, are these divided between desert hills and cave creek?
Yeah, well, I should just, we can assume because the fact the location, two of the locations are Phoenix addresses that are actually in desert hills.
Well, then read them for desert hills.
Okay, okay. So first off, we're doing, we're opening up the public hearing for gen item number six, which is the Cave Creek Water Service Area. You have nobody there.
I have nobody.
So if you will read that one, Sean, that the the Cave Creek Water one.
Okay, so for Cave Creek Water, we receive a comment from Nancy Byrne at P O Box 313. And they were referring to a Cape Creek provocable trust. The rate three quarter inch size for this household was increased $10 in 2020. The current billing for base rate is 6702, according to the rate increase flyer that was received. The increase is from the current rate of 5685 to the proposed rate of 5704. The bill here is already $10 more than the proposed rate increase. We can use $6 in water, or we can use $6 in water use with the taxes and fees than the bill. The base added to the bill is over $80, considering that we have already paid $10 over the proposed increase.
Okay, so there's that one. Do we know if anybody's online that wishes to talk to us on this? Okay, okay. Thank you, sir. So I will close public hearing at this time. We're back to council for a motion, please, on the main creek on the gen number six.
Be happy to make it. Most approved resolution are 2022-19, a resolution to the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting and amending the monthly service charges and usage charges for water service in the Cave Creek Water Service Area.
Usage rates.
I'm sorry.
Usage rates.
Usage rates, excuse me, after, I'll just read that sentence after adopting. Adopting and amending the monthly service charges and usage rates for water service in the Cave Creek Water Service Area.
Second.
Comment.
I think it's a good study. It's unfortunate. This is very difficult, but you know, they're just, we have to pay for the water we use, and there's just no getting around it.
But this has been going on. We've been studying it for years, and it's it's necessary. And the town is not making money on it. It's to cover expenses that have not been covered in the past.
And the prices for CAP water will not go down either. They're continuing to increase over the years, so.
And electric to get it up here, it's not going to go down either. All right. So I guess we'll probably do a voice vote on this one. Yeah, please, roll call. Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Kino.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember Roy.
Yes.
Councilmember Sova.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Sorry, folks. Gen item number seven, discussion, council discussion approval of resolution R 2022-20, a resolution of the mayor, town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting and amending the monthly service charges and usage rates for the Cave Creek Wastewater Service. We've already seen the presentation. Questions from council? We'll open up public hearing on this one.
David Phelps.
It's a never mind.
So we did receive one comment from Randy Cook at 6083 East Knoll's Way. How can such a high percentage of increase be validated? I am a seasonal owner, and this is unfair.
Because we have to pay the bills even when you're not here contributing. Close public hearing. And we're back to council for motion, please.
Sure.
Motion to approve resolution R 2022 hyphen 20, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting and amending the monthly service charges and usage rates for the Cave Creek Water System.
Waste water.
Just take on that wastewater, wastewater.
Your last two words.
Wastewater system.
Service.
Clarify.
Noted.
My comment is that we, the town has been subsidizing to a substantial degree, the wastewater system for years. This is not going to totally eliminate that, but it's going to eat into it and slowly but surely reduce the the amount of subsidy to nothing, at which time it may be that we've actually paid off the wastewater system.
Comment. The increase is approximately $27 per month, which is a lot. But when you consider, from what I've heard Sean say tonight, we haven't had an increase in the wastewater system for 13 years since 2009, which, when you apply one against the other, it would have come out to about a $2. which, when you apply one against the other, it would have come out to about a two dollar a month increase and not twenty-seven. So I would suggest that future mayors councils would find it prudent to perhaps look at rate increases beyond the five years that we may approve tonight and not wait another eight years beyond that before doing more. I think person's budget can handle it better if it's a smaller amount over more years than a lump sum at the end of thirteen years.
Don't look at me. I told you at the beginning of the meeting that I wasn't going to be here after two years from the next. All right, let's do a roll call on this as well.
Councilmember Monica Keno.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
I.
Councilmember Roy.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Yes, carry seven zero. Agenda number eight, excuse me, council discussion approval of resolution R twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one. A resolution of the mayor and town council, the town of King Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting and amending the monthly service charges and usage rates for water service in the Desert Hills Water Service Area. Having already seen the presentation and the numbers, we will go directly to public hearing. Nobody there, but you have two comments there, I believe, for Mezzer Hills.
Do you, Mayor? First was from Marlene Volkman at one, two, five, East Blue Ridge Lane. What is my current rate and what will the rate be increased? Will the rate be the increase? Second one is from Marlene Brock at three, five, nine, one, one, North Seventh Street, Phoenix. For the record, I like to be known that we appreciate the opportunity to pay our fair share to maintain the high-quality service and water source that Cave Creek has provided for Desert Hills Water Company, rather than either selling it or setting it up as a self-managed. We don't expect Cave Creek residents to bear any additional burden due to the ownership of the Desert Hills Water Company.
I like that person.
If we pass the electronic billboard, we could have. All right, I will now close public hearing. And we'll go with a roll calling in if we will. Let everybody, let everybody be in trouble.
We need a reading of the motion.
Oh, do we? Did we not have a motion? Let's go, come back for motion. Seventeen and a half years, I still don't know what I'm doing. Please try a motion.
Try to get this one right. Okay, a motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty-two hyphen twenty-one. A resolution to the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting and amending the monthly service charges and usage rates for water service in the Desert Hills Water Service Area.
Second.
Comment.
What we've said before, this is a necessary and timely action.
Concur with the vice.
Okay, go ahead, roll call. We can do it now because there's a motion in a second.
Councilmember Morris.
I.
Councilmember Roy.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Keno.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, thank you, general agenda. Item number nine, which is council discussion approval of first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero nine and ordinance of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek Town Code, Chapter fifty-two, Water, Amending Sections fifty-two dot zero, zero, one, and Providing for Severability. Sean.
Aaron Council, we're going to post some slides here. Kevin will talk, but I don't have any leading slides, but really, this is as part of the study that we we had. It was looking at utility rates and also capacity fees. The capacity fees are the fees that we charge for new connections to our either the the two water systems, Desert Hills Water System, Cave Creek Water Systems, or to the wastewater system. So as part of the report, we looked at it multiple ways. There's the buying capacity, sort of a hybrid capacity, and Kevin can explain the difference there, but it's really, this is the goal is for new development to pay for the cost of the system that the the town has, as well as what's needed to make sure that we can provide service that new connection. So with that, I'll pass it on to Kevin and he can explain the details that we proposed.
All right, thanks, Sean. Yes, this is a different animal than the the rates discussion that we just had. So if we can advance a couple of slides here, we'll get into the to the meat of this. There we go. So as Sean said, these are are different than the rates. So these are one-time payments at the, usually at the time that a permit is issued. It's for reinvestment or new investment in capital that's going to benefit the new development. So it's for used-up capacity associated with that new development, whereas the rates that we were discussing before, that funds your repair and repair and maintenance of the system, the chemical costs, staff time, meter reads, meter replacements, all that kind of thing. That's taken care of through rates. This is for the for the backbone infrastructure that has either been built before the new development comes in, or in cases where additional infrastructure needs to be built in order to provide service to those new developments. So that's what we're looking at here. It can be used for debt service. So to the extent that you've issued debt to to fund that new capital infrastructure that needs to be built, you can use a capacity fees for that. And there has to be a rational nexus between the fee that is assessed and the service that's being provided. So we need to identify the cost of the capacity that is going to be benefiting that new development, and that's the maximum that we can charge. You can charge anything up to that point, but you can't charge over and above that amount. So we can't, we can't look at what our neighbors are doing and deciding that our neighbors are fifty percent higher than us, so we want to be forty-five percent higher than we currently are without doing the analysis to find out if that number can be supported. So we'll get into that in a little bit. When we start talking about the the comparison. So next slide, please. So as Sean alluded to, he mentioned a couple of different approaches, the buying approach and the hybrid approach. So what we used for the the water system, the Cave Creek Water System, is what we're considering a hybrid approach. So that looks at the investments that have already been made into the system. So what have the existing ratepayers? What is the existing development paid for in the system itself? It is going to be then used to to provide service to to future developments. So in looking at that, we look at what the total value of the system is, how much capacity can be served by said system, A divided by B tells us what the fee per capacity unit is that we can assess new development going forward, so that they're buying into the system on the same playing field as those who have come before. The second approach that we often look at is an incremental approach, so it's a forward-looking approach. So if Sean was to put together a five- or ten-year capital improvement program that had a big list of capital projects that were needed to be done in order to serve new development, we could use that as the basis for calculating the fee. We would look at what the cost of that capital is going forward, again, divided by the capacity that can be served by that new capital, and that would give us a unit cost that we would then charge to development. In the case of the Cave Creek Water System, we had some existing capacity in the existing system. Somebody else has paid for that existing system before new development comes, but Sean also needed to construct some additional infrastructure in order to provide service for for the new development. So that's where it's a hybrid situation, where we're looking at both the existing investment and the additional investment that needs to be made into the system in order to provide service. As we looked at the Desert Hills system and the wastewater system, we didn't have any growth-related capital identified in the near future. So both of those fees were calculated based on on the buy-in approach and the investments that's been made to date. So next slide, please. So as we look at the Cave Creek Water Capacity Fee, so we've got the existing charges there. So the one-inch meter, which is what the the typical meter size going forward is anticipated to be, it's currently at one, seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars per one-inch connection. And the proposed maximum supportable fee is the eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. So again, that's the maximum that our our analysis can support at this point in time. Next slide, please. On the Desert Hill side, the current one-inch meter is twelve thousand, four hundred and eight. Our maximum calculated is twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-four. So council could adopt anything up to that twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollar level. So then if we go to the next slide, we got some some comparisons here. So you can see where Cave Creek is currently, it's in the the green bar, and then the second green bar is Desert Hills Current. And then the the purple bars are the proposed for Cave Creek and Desert Hills at the one-inch meter level. You'll see some of them are just blue bars and then some are blue and red. So some of the entities that we looked at here made a distinction between the capacity fee for the water system itself, and then a distinction for the water resource component that they charge. So in those cases, that's why there's a blue bar and a red bar. In the cases where it's just a blue bar, it's all been commingled into into one fee. The other thing worth noting here is that both Phoenix and Peoria, Peoria charge different rates for residential versus non-residential. So a one-inch residential meter for Peoria and Phoenix is cheaper than a one-inch meter for non-residential customers.
If I can jump in, council's seen some repayment agreements through I G A, intergovernmental agreement with the city of Phoenix, so we want to make sure that you saw those, the the Phoenix North res, non-residential areas, those are some of the repayments you've been seeing, about twenty-five thousand dollars. But in in the same area in Phoenix, they charge substantially less for a single family, about sixty-nine hundred dollars. So in case you see, you've heard us, because we've come back and then there's four different repayment agreements. The larger fees you saw, because that was for the commercial development on the south west corner of Cave Creek, Cave Creek Road and Cave Creek Highway.
Can you give us a quick explanation as to why that's according to state law that they can do that?
So I was a little bit caught off guard when I saw this myself, so I dug into both the reports, both for Peoria and for for Phoenix, and an analysis was done where they compared the average use for a single-family connection, and then they looked at the average use for a non-residential connection. And the delta between the two is what they used as the the ratio to increase the rate for the non-residential meters.
That does not residential mean outside the Phoenix City limits, or does it mean a
Commercial.
Business.
A business, a commercial business, yeah.
I think in this case of Phoenix, when I read the report, it seems like they're factoring the fire flow for commercial demand. Typically, fire flow is a lot higher than residential. So they were, you're paying a large proportional share, especially at the northern area of the system, where they had to expand the system to meet those fire flows.
Sean, a question, like, for example, Peoria, Scottsdale, Glendale are considerably less. Would the reason be, I'm assuming it might be one of two reasons that those communities have a much higher population than we do. So costs are spread over more households, more users. Secondly, I'm assuming they have a much higher D U, density per unit, per acre than we do in our thirty-eight square miles, and that's the reason ours, especially Desert Hills, and seems out of whack with the dollar amounts there. Would this be a correct?
Those would be good statement on my part. Those'd be good assumptions, a little more detail, especially with my experience with Peoria in that in in northern Peoria, they break it down into different development zones, north and south of Bell, Bell Road, and east and west of our Faria, depending on where you are, and most of the period's more in infill, and then where it's going to be new growth, a lot of it's in large P A D type of developments. The Stanci Development, seventy-four hundred acres, and they're building the infrastructure necessary for themselves, so they don't put a burden as much on the rest of the system, because they're building the infrastructure that they're needing, including a wastewater treatment plant, and then, so that's why I think the Peoria, Scottsdale, I think is similar. And then Glendale, again, Glendale is largely built out. They did have a differentiation between their eastern, western areas, but their western area was actually going to get water service from another utility.
But the fact our town is primarily single-family detached housing, there'd be no need to break it down in quadrants or zone.
No, that would be, I think it'd add more confusion than necessary in the way we run the system. It's not, I think, appropriate.
Thank you.
All right, next slide, please. So then we've got the the wastewater capacity fee. So again, the one-inch being the the standard meter size going forward, you're at thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twelve today, and we've calculated that you could go up to twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-five. So then the next slide, we don't have a comparison on wastewater, so the next steps would be the second reading of the capacity fee ordinance on December fifth. And then per state statute, new fees would be eligible to become effective thirty days after formal adoption by council. So with that, if there are additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, some questions. Nope. All right, there's public hearing on this one. We'll open public hearing.
No one wishing to speak.
We don't have any online things on this one either, so I will now close public hearing. And we're back to council for a motion, please. I'll ask for a motion before I ask for a vote this time around.
I'll make a motion. Mr. Morris can make it, whatever.
Don't fight over it, guys.
Hey, it's his last. Maybe your last chance.
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance oh two, zero, two, two, hyphen, zero, nine, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek Town Code, Chapter thirty-two, Water, Amending Sections fifty-two point zero, zero, one, and Providing for Severability.
Second.
Comment.
The only comment would be, this is an item we've discussed ad nauseam over years, and we've had public input comments, so we need to do this.
Don't you dare.
I know you're looking at me.
Okay, no more comments from council? Let's do, let's do a roll call on this one as well.
Councilmember Roy.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Keno.
No.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Yes, motion carries six, one. Agenda item number ten, which is council discussion and approval of resolution R twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two. A resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving a water shortage and drought management plan placed on the agenda by the utilities director. Bye, David.
Thank you, Mary Council. We've got a couple of quick slides for this, and then we've got Michelle McBrethen, who's available online to answer any questions. So we've had discussions on this previously, so the goal tonight is and is to actually have council adopt the document itself. There's no real meat to it yet, but this would give us the guidance to actually move forward and propose some town code changes, which we can come back and that would give us the meat that we I can do this today. Next slide, Brian. Okay, quick summary of the town's water resources. So in Cave Creek, we rely exclusively right now on our central, our project water supplies. Once the transfer to Carefree occurs, our municipal industrial allocation will be two thousand, two hundred and eighty and two two thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight acre feet. We do have some groundwater wells. We've been investigating whether we can bring it back online, but at this point, physically, they're not connected to the system, and we don't have physical access to them. Desert Hills, on the opposite, does actually have three groundwater wells which provide water out in that system, but they're not adequate to provide the needs. So the Desert Hills actually relies on the portion of the town's municipal industrial supplies, but this last eighteen months, we were actually able to secure some non-Indian agricultural water for Desert Hills. Ironically, it leads into the fact that with the the tiered shortages on the Colorado River, the, while we have now had the municipal industrial water supply spread eighteen months, this upcoming year, they've asked us to actually cut that back by twenty-five percent. So it's, it's not as secure as municipal industrial supplies, and at this point, we haven't seen anything in the next few years that will impact the municipal industrial supplies, although we actually have heard from C, Centros on our project and Arizona Department of Water Resources on whether we're willing to give back a portion of our allocation that we're not utilizing. So those discussions are ongoing. One thing that the town has adopted in twenty twenty-one, we adopted the water resource policy. That was an update from the twenty One thing that the town has adopted in 2021, we adopted the Water Resource Policy. That was an update from the 2017 policy, and that really addressed two big things. It looked at the long-term sustainability of the town's water resources and really looked at the transfer water that we're sending out to Desert Hills. And and made the distinction, the hard decision that we can no longer allow for new connections out in the Desert Hills area unless it's contractual or statutory obligation. So that's been in place since December of last year, and that has limited the the new connections, not the growth out in Desert Hills, because it's outside of municipal boundaries. We can't control that growth, but it has limited the number of new water connections to the system out there.
Sean, before you proceed, you zip past that part about there's discussions on limiting more of our water. They met, we will need to take very close consideration on that. It's going to be a especially it's a voluntary. I mean, that may affect us into the future. We have to really consider what the long-term impact is on that.
Yeah, I was just notified and let council know that from ADWR, they've asked us as a what is subcontract holder with Central Arizona Project. They've asked all subcontractors if they're willing to give back some of the water, and there's actually potentially some financial benefit to the the town per acre foot for next year to help with the the ongoing.
So it's a temporary, because I'm thinking of that water meter that's reading 11%.
Yeah, no, this is a, this is sort of a short-term solution to try and balance the water. So that if people like the town right now, we're not using all of our central Arizona Project allocation. If instead of us taking it all and recharging it, it would be the thought would be we'd give some of it back, potentially compensated for. So that water doesn't have to be taken off the river and transferred between the reservoir. So it's it's part of a balancing act, and it's something that, again, I just, I was just notified of, we could, we can half ago about this. It's an opportunity for us and see if we want to participate in that moving forward. But it does show that the, you know, we're next slide, right? You know, we're 23 years into a drought situation here. So it's something, there's some hard decisions being made, and that's one of the reasons that we wanted to update the water storage and drought management plan. The town code requires us to have a drought management plan. When I first came on board in 2019, the Water Advisory Committee worked on a plan. It didn't come back to council, and we didn't do the modifications requiring a town code to actually add teeth to it. So the goal here is to to use this as a guide and documents, come back with councils with the town code revisions to allow us to enforce that. And some other things that are changing is, you know, again, our physical infrastructure has changed. We've we've lost 550 accounts in the pipelines associated with that. We've lost some of the CAP allocation. That was water set aside to both currently support the Carefree customers on the connections and system and allow for their future growth out there. So we lost the 386 acre feet. So this is allows us to look at this all in total again. Next slide, Brian. And in addition to that, CAP last year did notify, last year was the first year of a tiered shortage on the Central Arizona Project. So while we're 22 years into drought condition, because of the water management that the state's done for the 22 years prior to that, we, they did not ever have to to do a tiered shortage. So it shows, I think, good water resource management on on the state level and with Central Arizona Project. So but moving forward, you know, I'm looking at our projections, we're hearing about projections for the next five years that you know, there's going to be more hardship to come, more hard decisions to make. So it's something for us to consider. So another reason why it's good for us to to take the time and update this document. So on August 4th, we actually had a discussion with council about this document, because half times we weren't able to get back to you until November 9. But we presented the draft plan at that time. We thought they tied better back to the town's rawer resources and infrastructure. We outlined five levels of demand reduction strategies that are more unique for the town. They're not tired tied specifically back to a CAP tiered reduction notice, because we're not using all of our CAP allocation right now. We're looking at this as sort of short-term plus long-term. But we came up with a proposal that would allow us to do almost a formula base where we're going to project out for the following year. Look at our demands right now and then see if again, if if we're being told to cut our allocation, where that would mean and what that would mean to the town specifically. So it takes into account any tiered shortages that are being declared. But it makes it Cave Creek specific, which I think is unique for us. And I think it's a good way for us to look at our water resources moving forward. We do provide options for how to reduce our municipal residential and commercial demands. I'll be honest, municipal demands, we're not that much. Or one of our highest water uses is our wastewater treatment plant. I'm working with staff on actually how to optimize that that plant down there. Residential demands, close to 90%, like 85% of our customer base is residential in the town. So if we can get our customers through education to start reducing, that's our best bang for our dollar overall for our water resource, water budget. And then with the plan, we are proposing some new violation war warnings and surcharges. So surcharges is just that, we don't have the ability right now without coming back to council. Outside of the rates, say that we just did, the goal be within town code to actually put in some teeth that allows us to charge people if we're into a shortage situation and people are not reducing their water usage. Right now, above 30,000 gallons, we have the five rate tiers, but we're saying, we'll actually put some surcharges in place that if if it gets severe enough, we really need those large water users to cut back. And and financial implications are one way. We actually have talked about in the plan, and we have to figure out how to put that in code is to go back to potentially doing water restrictions. What that means is potentially going to someone's water meter and put it an orifice plate on it that restricts the amount of water that they can use. So those are, those are, I hope we don't go that direction, but we need to have those tools in our toolkit as we move forward to manage town's water resources. Next slide, Brian. So right now, we've made some cleanup effort exercises to it, to the document itself, remove the draft from it, did some other things. But it's really the document you have in your package tonight is what we're proposing as the final document. We're actually hoping that you agree that's a good document. And then the next step, I'll be working with Michelle and also be able to come back with code revisions as we move forward, which I have to go through the code revision ordinance process. So with that, I can answer any questions. And the interaction tonight is just to adopt this, the resolution, which is adopting the plan itself. And we'll be coming back later with the ordinances.
Question from council? Councilman Macino?
Thank you, Mayor. Sean, in the possibility that we would be limited in our water. We have a number of wells that are not operational. I don't remember in the CIP, is there a plan to repair these so that we could use them?
Not currently in the CIP. What we actually had in this year's CIP was to do some evaluations. We've done the initial evaluation of of six of the wells. We did a paper study of all the wells in Cave Creek, which was how much words ADWR say they have available to us. We actually made a decision, looking at physically where they're placed in the system, which ones might be viable. And we looked at six of the casings and did an initial evaluation where we actually dropped a camera down them to see the condition, the next step. And we saw some dollars this year would be to clean those casings and then do a second assessment. Most of them were had been unused for so long, there's a lot of tuberculosis and other things in there. But I think there's probably four that we can look at to clean up and then potentially the final step would be a pump test and verify how how much of a yield we can get out of them. So we are working that process with the integrated master plan, which we're coming back to council. Probably in a couple of meetings with the award of that contract, that'll be something that we do look at. But right now, none of the, none of the wells are physically connected to the system to the point that we can use them. Prior to even the town buying the system, most of the wells actually didn't tie directly into the distribution system. There was a, it used to be a parallel well, raw water well lines that were run through the system. A number of those lines have been broken, but the wells were being brought together and brought at one point to the water treatment plant for some isolated treatment for arsenic mitigation. As well as something to use as water that can supplement our, our the contractual obligations to ranching me on a golf course. So those are things that we I like to look at moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor. That's my last question.
Anybody else?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Actually, there's public comment, but David left.
Right.
Oh. Well, come on up, Dusty. By the way, I want to tell both of you, thank you for coming to meetings for the last couple of months. I appreciate you.
I apologize, I wasn't able to make the last Wednesday meeting. Unfortunately, I have some had some other commitments that I couldn't get out of.
You know.
It's the way it works.
I will overlook it.
I'm sure you will. Dusty Rhodes, 41403 North Old Stage Road, Cave Creek. It's great that we're talking about doing the wells. I've also mentioned, Sean, what we need to do probably next year. If when we work on the budget, add a hydrographic survey, find out how much water we have in the aquifer here that we can tap into. Probably not have to do it next year, but probably will have to do that a couple of years from now if we continue having that shortage. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no more? We're back to council for a motion, please. Actually, anybody want to, Michelle's sitting there, somebody want to ask her something? So she
Well, I guess I could just make a comment and Michelle can respond if she wants. If we, if we do tap into our wells in Cave Creek, will jeopardize our ability to
To bank.
To bank water. So that's a consideration in the future. You know, given the fact that we might not have any water to bank, you know, we might want to more seriously consider it. But we all need to be aware, but that's, that's a factor. If we pump water out of wells, we're not able to.
We had resolved that.
We did in Cave Creek. We did. And that's why we're able to bank water now. But if we choose to take water out of a well in the future, we will not be able to bank water again.
Right.
Forever, Michelle?
Or is that? Um, no, I think that the idea behind the wells is that there could be severe water shortages in our future. And if it comes to the point where you're asking residents to cut their actual water use significantly. The first thing that those customers are going to want to know is, well, can't you just turn on the well? So I think the town needs to be in a position to answer that question before that happens. You know, if that is a good backup supply, but I think it would be more of an emergency supply. It wouldn't be something that you'd just turn on and leave on. And I don't think that the hydrographics or hydrologic survey would show that the groundwater condition is very good. I mean, we've had a number of of hydro studies in that area for many years, and it's not that good. It would be more of an emergency sort of supply.
Yeah, if I can just, if I could just add, the 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 situation we're in right now is that the town, because we aren't using the wells, we aren't withdrawing groundwater. And the town has a groundwater right right now. That is allowing us to do recharge of our excess CAP water and generate long-term storage credits for the town. If we start using the wells, then we run into what's called water buds. So we actually have to, we'd have to actually replenish the groundwater first before we can get generate long-term storage credits. And that's what I think the council member was referring to. So there are legal things that we need to consider with the town's water resources and our water balance.
All right. I guess at this point, we're back to council for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Wait, wait, how about one of these people who's not going to be here? Anybody down here feel left out tonight? Go ahead.
Motion to approve Resolution R 2022-22. Resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving a water shortage and drought management plan.
Second.
Tom seconded. Okay, you had, you had the motion and comments on that?
I'm thrilled that we got this accomplished, and I appreciate all the effort of both Sean and Michelle to get it done.
And now we got to go to the taxidermist and put some stuff in inside it, since it's a shell.
The beginning that we needed.
There you go. Tom, you comment?
I'll go there.
Can't hear you anyway. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we've got to go there.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 It looks like it carried, I'm all opposed. Nobody's opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Now, since this is my last meeting to sit in the middle thing, I'm going to do something that I've never done before. Motion to adjourn.
Second.